Just let us know when you're ready to go, Rick. All right, thank you. I'm gonna share over the screen. All right. One second. Okay, all right, good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Montclair zoning board of adjustment. It is Wednesday, July 21st. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the board. Notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice municipal building and sending a copy of the notice to the Star Ledger in the Montclair. I will start with the roll call. Mr. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Fleischer. Mr. Church. Mr. McCullough. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Allen is absent this evening. Mr. Simon is excused this evening. Ms. Harrison is excused this evening. Mr. Caulfield.
Here.
Ms. Gilmer is excused this evening. And Mr. Viera.
Here.
And our attorney, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, we have the minutes of the June 16th meeting. I just have one change on page four. My fingers are not working. Just on line 12, the middle where it says existing dwelling, it should say existing dwelling unit. Anyone else with any other changes to the?
Move the minutes as corrected.
Second.
Second.
One, first, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any extensions?
Aye, John Caulfield. Mr. Caulfield and Mr. McCullough, that will be.
Extension, John McCullough.
And then we have resolution for the property at 41 Harrison Avenue. I don't have any changes to the resolution. Does anyone else have any change? And if not, would someone like to motion?
With the resolution as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed and abstentions? Again, Mr. Caulfield and Mr. McCullough. Next, we have the continuation of the public hearing for the property at 92 Bay Street. Is the applicant ready to proceed?
Yes, I'm just bringing Mr. Pirmali, the attorney for the applicant in the meeting now. Mr. Pirmali, can you hear us? Let me just unmute you. Go ahead, Mr. Pirmali.
Can you hear me now, Graham?
Yes, we can.
Great.
It's Graham, it's Mike Sullivan. How many eligible board members do we have for this? I know this is a continuation, and I know you had circulated some certifications also.
Yes, Mr. Caulfield and Mr. McCullough are both eligible to participate in tonight's proceedings. They reviewed the video and the submitted materials for the application.
So we have seven?
Yes, so everyone, every, all board members in attendance, we have seven members present, all seven are eligible tonight.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Graham. I just have three witnesses tonight, Billy Normal or Gotti. I don't intend to call him affirmatively as a witness, but I would like to bring him in. He's the property owner. If you have any questions about him, we want him to be available. We also have our site architect, Ali Qureshi. And our site engineer is Adnan Khan. I just want to make sure they're available.
I have, yeah, I see Mr. Qureshi. And then I have an AWZ Incorporated participating.
That's Adnan Khan, AWZ engineer.
Okay. Who would you like to start with this evening?
I just, to make a brief opening statement, if I may. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Once again, Michael Pirmali, the law firm Gashon Mako, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville, appearing on behalf of the applicant and property owner, New Asset LLC. The applicant was before the board at the May hearing last, at the May zoning board adjustment application. We've heard some comments from the board, and we've made significant changes to the application since. Specifically, we've eliminated two parking spaces, the ones nearest the north and west property lines in order to provide additional landscape and buffer on the Sherman street frontage and also for the properties in the north. Provided four-foot landscape buffer on both the north and west property lines, landscaping in front of the friends on the north property line. We've eliminated the windows on the first floor unit in the, by the parking area to reduce the glare from headlights for parking. And last but not least, we've reduced the number of bedrooms for the project. Now we propose four two-bedroom units, no need for a parking bathroom. Once again, I have three witnesses, but I intend to just call our project architect, Ali Khan first, and then our project engineer, Ali Qureshi rather, and then our project engineer, Adnan Khan second. Mr. Giliar Margate, our property owner and applicant, is available if we do have any questions from them.
And Mr. Pirmali, that, the last hearing was June 16th, correct?
Oh, I apologize. I thought we were further back. It must have been the Historic Preservation Commission, yes, June 15th.
Okay, so your first witness is?
My first witness is our project architect, Ali Qureshi.
Okay.
Qureshi is now here in the meeting.
And, and we previously swore you in, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just state your name and address again for the record, please.
My name is Ali Qureshi, and my address is 236 Grandview Avenue, North Corvell, New Jersey, 07006.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, may I proceed with this witness?
Yes.
Mr. Qureshi, would you just describe for the board the changes that were made to the plans? I know minor exterior revisions were made, but most importantly, would you describe the changes made to the interior floor plan and specifically the separate entrance that now will access the recreation area and also closer to the refuge?
Yes, first changes on the ground floor, we created a corridor going towards the back of the building, which will be used for, to go for the recreation area. And also you can go to the parking as well as to the garbage bins. So that's a big improvement. The other one is we created four, well, there were four apartments before. Now all four apartments are two-bedroom. Initially, there were more bedrooms. One was three and one was four bedrooms. So now all four bedrooms of four apartments are two bedrooms each.
Mr. Qureshi, before we leave this plan and while we're talking about the inclusion of the new corridor to the recreation area, I want to briefly make mention of the fact that in order to accomplish that, we had to reduce size of that one-two-bedroom apartment unit, is that correct?
Yes, so in order to create this corridor, we have to reduce this apartment, and it's a little undersized, less than 800 square foot. It is around 700 square foot. It's 685 to be exact.
So in order to accomplish this additional entrance and exit way, we did have to reduce the size of that unit to 665 square feet. My understanding, Mr. Sylvan and Graham, is that would trigger an additional variance as 800 square feet is the minimum apartment size. The ordinance provision, I believe, is 347-54B1, and I just want to put that on the record that we are, as applicant, requesting that additional variance.
Yes, that's correct.
And Mr. Sullivan, our notice did include the catch-all language, as we did not incorporate that in our addition, in our original.
Right, you can proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Qureshi, continue to describe the changes to the interior floor plans, reducing the number of bedroom units.
Yes, so we, it's some reconfiguration of the apartments, which are shown on the revised floor plans. So the biggest change is, of course, the, the number of bedrooms are reduced to two bedrooms each. So that's primarily the major change. Everything else is the same, the building footprint, the overall volume and exterior is the same, except for some window reconfiguration towards the parking side, so that we don't have to, because of the parking or glare from the, from the incoming cars. So we took care of that part.
Now, what about the, the second and third floor units? Would you describe those floor plans?
Sure. Okay, so these second floor units are each, based on second and third floor. So each apartment is partially on second floor and partially on, on the third floor. So we made the common areas much larger in order to reduce the number of bedrooms. And third floor is kind of like an attic or dormer out. So most of the area is attic space, and then we have dormers all over the place. So, so the open area is kind of a rec, rec area or a play area with the one bedroom on each apartment or each apartment.
And Mr. Qureshi, just to confirm, for the board, each unit, each of the four apartment units will have its own washer dryer, is that correct?
Yes, each apartment will have its own laundry room.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions with this witness.
Questions?
I said you were muted, Bill.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, no questions.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Viera, do you have any questions?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions. Are there any members of the public who have any questions for this witness? And this is just the chance I ask the architect questions.
Sure, so all members of the public, I will be unmuting all public lines. If you would like to ask a question of Mr. Qureshi regarding his testimony on the project's architecture, please state your name and I'll bring you into the meeting. So I'll be unmuting all lines. Please state your name if you'd like to ask a question at this time. Again, please state your name if you'd like to ask a question at this time. Pass call for any members of the public with a question of Mr. Qureshi's testimony at this time. Mr. Chairman, I'm not hearing any questions.
Do you want to call your next witness?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call my next witness, project engineer, Adnan Khan.
All right, Mr. Khan, you were previously sworn. You understand you're still under oath?
Yes, I am.
Okay, just give us again your name and address, please.
Adnan Khan, AWZ Engineering, 150 River Road, Montreal, New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Khan, would you go through the changes that were made to the last board meetings, to the plans to incorporate the comments of the board members?
Sure. Can we go to sheet, sheet O2, the second, the next sheet?
Yes.
Okay. So in front of you is the site plan, the revised site plan that we prepared. And based on the comments we got from the board members last time, we made significant improvements to the layout, the parking, and we addressed most of the board members' concerns and recommendations into an incorporated, incorporated in into this plan. So I'm going to highlight the changes that we did as far as the site circulation and site layout is concerned. The one change, I believe the board members agreed that we need more green area, and we can eliminate one parking space. What we did is to the south side, we eliminated a parking space. If you recall, there were four spaces in the previous plan, so now we have three spaces. In addition, we added a four-foot wide shrubs or a buffer between the building and that side of the parking area. So, so the concern that the glare and the headlights will shine in the windows will be eliminated by the introduction of this green area between the building and the parking. The other concern that the board members mentioned was the snow stop, stockpiling of the snow on the site. If you recall, we only had one striped area behind the, or in front of the trash enclosure. Now we are utilizing the other hashed area, which is next to where it says three, number three for the parking spaces close to the building. That area can be utilized as a secondary or additional snow stockpiling area. So it's not just going to be concentrated in one corner depending upon this snow event. They can be piled separately on, and these are hashed area. The other change that we did is the, the concern, the distance between the parking lot and the adjacent building on Sherman. We shifted the parking approximately, I mean, close to the south side and added a four-foot wide, again, green area along the parking area and the adjacent building. And those, the plantings in that area will be evergreen type trees, which will be a good buffer for the adjacent building. And in addition, we have, again, as we mentioned, I think it was part of the original plan as well, like we are proposing wood-on-wood fence six foot high along the eastern side of the property line, which goes, or which wraps around the back to the north, close to the adjacent building. Between the fence and the additional screening on the plan provides much better buffer arrangement for the adjacent neighbor.
And now, before you go on past the fencing, I'd like briefly make mention of the fact that is your understanding that a maximum fence height of four and a half feet is permitted? And we're asking for six, so we are asking for a variance for that six-foot fence due to the design to provide additional buffering to the neighboring property?
That is correct, and that, that variance is limited to the area in the front yard along the building line. I believe, if I understand right, the ordinance calls in for a seven-foot-high fence is permitted, but only four and a half feet is permitted from the building line onwards. So that's the, that's the section of the fence that the variance would be required.
Just, if I could just clarify, just for the benefit of the board and the interpretation that the zoning department uses for corner properties and the way the ordinance is written, corner properties are permitted to have taller fencing in, along this line and then up to this point at the rear corner of the building. So the variance relief is actually required for this portion of fencing that goes forward of the rear corner of the building into the side yard. This corner, corner properties are allowed to have taller fencing behind the rearmost, extreme rearmost corners of the building, opposite, you know, the narrower street frontage, which is the true front. So the, the section that, the section of fencing that will require variance relief is this section of fencing forward of the rear corner up to this point where the fence terminates? In this area.
So the fence along the neighboring house that is conforming?
That's correct.
So on behalf of the applicant, honestly, that area, we'd like to keep the six-foot fence along the rail line just for consistency, but if the board were to prefer a 4.5, four-and-a-half-foot fence in that area, the applicant would be happy to provide that as well. Mr. Khan, can you continue, I'm sorry?
Sure, and the other change, the significant change you did, if you recall, we had a concrete walk on the property line coming from the front door facing Sherman, going to the parking area in the back. So we removed that side of walkway from that area and converted that into a green area with the shrubbery and the trees. So that, that sidewalk has been removed as well from this plan. Also, as Mr. Qureshi testified, that they introduced a new corridor for the residents to pick up the garbage and take it to the trash can. So we added the walkway that will go, that will lead to the trash enclosure for a quick delivery of the trash into the fence. I believe that's pretty much the changes that we did on the plans.
Mr. Khan, just lastly, before we move forward to the engineering review letter, could you just briefly describe the lighting on the site and, and just confirm that the lighting won't be spilling onto the neighboring properties?
That is correct, and I think I testified that in my last month's hearing, that the light fixtures that we are proposing are all like, I mean, the light poles and even the building-mounted fixtures, they are all shielded-type fixtures and downward throw. So in other words, the light is going to only go forward without any splat across the property line. Plus, in, due to the fact that we also have a fence, a six-foot fence, and some green area and shrubbery, that will, in addition to the fixture type, will also prevent any splat going across the property.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Just now moving on, did you have an opportunity to review the July 20th, 2021 correspondence from the Montclair Consulting Engineer?
Yes, I did.
And would you just take a minute to go over that with me specifically? I'm looking at page two, technical comment three. They're asking that we show the dimension at the northeast corner to show compliance along the east side property line for buffering. Do we have that on our plans?
Yes, we do have, actually, we do have that dimension on our site plan.
And what is it?
It's four feet. If you go just under the north arrow, yeah, you see to the right of your screen, there's a dimension four feet to the northeast side as well as a four feet on northwest side. So we have that dimension on the plan.
And just moving on to technical comment four, concerns about the vehicle overhangs. Is there any obstructions that are going to be placed on the one area in front of those parking spaces?
I believe the introduction of the green area or the shrubs will prevent any cars or even if, let's say, they overhang a little bit, there will be a mechanism to kind of like stop the cars before they hit the shrubs. And I think we have enough room for the overhang to accommodate the overhang, but if the board wishes, we can always add the wheel stops to further prevent any overhang into the landscape area.
Moving on to page three, technical comment six. Sheet C02, the site plan set includes a note stating existing well to be abandoned per applicable requirements. Applicant shall provide documentation of well closure upon completion of, upon completion or required by the township. Comment has not been addressed. Would you explain to us the situation with that note?
Yeah, there is a, whenever you're abandoning a well, there is a process by DEP that it has to be done by a certified well driller. And as part of the closure, they have to submit some documentation to DEP for the closure that it's been done properly. So I don't think, I don't think there will be an issue providing that when the time comes for the closure of the well, and we can provide a copy to the town as well.
And the applicant was clearly set that as a condition of any approval granted by the board?
That is correct.
So moving on to, so comment 10 with regard to landscaping. I think we've addressed appropriately the type of species of planting that we propose. Do you agree, Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Comment 11, applicant shall provide spot elevations at the bottom and top of the stairs in front of the building. Did we provide that on our site plan?
Yeah, there, there is a spot elevation also in front of the building, and it should be on the next sheet, the grading plan. Okay. Yeah, you'll see like that square to the left-hand corner which says 241. There's the elevation by the stairs that we have provided. But if, if need to be additional spot grids, we can definitely add a few more spot grids.
Comment 13, applicant should provide testimony regarding the pedestrians' traffic, would you just once again go over how pedestrians are going to access this dwelling and how they're going to pass by the dwelling? I'm sorry, I'm incorrect. 13, site plan set includes a note stating to use existing driveway as stabilized construction entrance. I believe the question is, how will pedestrians get around if we're using the existing driveways as stabilized construction entrance?
Actually, that note is for soil erosion permit purposes and only applies during construction. There is a requirement that for soil erosion that they don't want during construction. They don't want any dirt to be carried by the vehicles onto the street and to the drainage system, municipal drainage system. So it's a tracking pad like which is essentially stone laid over on top of the pavement just to track the dirt before it hits the street or before the vehicles hit the street. So this is just general note for soil erosion purposes. And again, after construction, all these soil erosion measures will be removed.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Chairman, I have no further questions in this conference.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
Can we just go back to the cell plan?
Give me one second.
Yep, no problem. I'm trying to understand. First, I want to know where the three parking spaces are, because I see the number three twice, but I'm not sure I know where the specific three parking spaces are, because it looks to me like there were four and maybe five. I'm not understanding it, so I'm just asking for clarification.
Okay, we have a set of two, three parking spaces. A three parking spaces to the west along, and I know exactly where the cursor is, so one, two, and three. And then we have three parking spaces to the south facing the building. For a total of six parking spaces.
And, and sufficient, all three of those have nine-foot-wide spaces?
That is correct, yes. They are nine by 18 as per the engineering standards, yes.
Okay, the other question I have is, I'm looking at the area of the trash enclosure, which appears to show some doors on the front. I'm looking at the walkway, or what I think is the walkway, which goes to the door, which is somewhere down there, because it's not very clear on this where the door is. How do you get from the walkway around to the front of the trash enclosure?
Actually, I think that's a good point. Like, actually, I think we've, the, I mean, it's, it's not shown clearly, but there will be a man door at, at the junction that the sidewalk meets the trash enclosure, and that will be for the residents. So, so they can just go through that door in the back, go to the dumpsters, throw the, throw the garbage. And the front door is for the trucks. When they come for pickup and delivery, they will open up the double doors, and then they can pick up the garbage and take it out.
Okay, let me ask one. I guess it's another question related to the site plan. Can we bring that down again so I can see the whole site plan, Graham? Can we? Yeah, now, right now, when they go out, I'm just trying to understand what happens on Sherman. When, when they go out the front doors to go to their cars, where can they gain access to the parking lot?
They have to walk on the sidewalk, which is on the right of it. They will come out of the doors, go through, we have a sidewalk connection from, in front of the door to the existing sidewalk, and they will walk to north, to north towards the parking area, and then they can enter the parking from that, from that entrance.
And that's, and that's because you have a chain link fence along the entire sidewalk?
No, no, there is no fence proposed on that side. There will be no fence on Sherman or.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand why they can't just walk, why you can't give them a, it's a. Two things have happened simultaneously. One, you created this new entrance to the back, but it doesn't really help anybody get to the parking lot. And then you have a fence that now forces them to walk all the way to the far end of the parking lot to get back in, to get their cars. And I'm not understanding, once you've made this walkway, why the trash area can't be situated in such a manner that the walkway out of the back door gets you into the parking lot? So that's the first question I'm asking. So somehow like that, some way like that would allow, and again, I don't know how the trash removal is going, but I didn't have the impression that you're having a big garbage truck come in here and pick up containers. So it seems to me that if. So it seems to me that if, if, it seems to me that if you've created this corridor, I'm going to come back to that in a second. We've created a corridor, which I understand, that car to get you back to the trash areas. And in my opinion, order at least be able to allow you to go to the parking lot. So I think that can be handled. I guess I'm not.
I can explain that a little bit, like if you want to, I can explain it. If you recall, in our previous version, we had the sidewalk on the property that will take the tenants along the sidewalk going to the parking area, but that was a board's proposal last time, why we need two sidewalks parallel to each other and why cannot just be removed that sidewalk and converted into green area, which we did in this plan.
I'm not arguing that. I'm simply saying you've already put in this new sidewalk in the back. That ought to be sufficient to get you there to the.
And that's a very good comment, and I think we, just like it's been drawn on our plan, we can rotate the trash enclosure 90 degrees, the way it's drawn up on the plan. And that will give a free access from the rear into the parking area for the tenants.
Okay, so I think.
Can be accommodated easily.
So I think that's a better solution than forcing everybody to walk all the way to the far end of the parking lot. I was going to go a different place, and maybe it doesn't matter at this stage because we're talking about the variance for the very small apartment on that side of the building. And I'm wondering if a path just can't be created from the sidewalk and just get into the parking lot at the beginning of the sidewalk and get to the trash enclosure that way because the distances aren't that different. But I'm satisfied with what you've done, if you can make passage all the way through to the, to the parking lot.
No, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and I think we can do it. That should not be an issue.
That's all I.
Again, go ahead, Mr. Harrison, you're heated.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
Hang on, Mr. Church. Go ahead, Mr. Church.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
No questions, Chair, thank you.
Mr. Viera, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question for the engineer. The lighting in the parking lot, the proposed lighting is only one light pole proposed? Or is there any other location where you're proposing lighting?
No, we have quite a few light pole fixtures, and let me just bring up the plan here that I have here, the lighting plan. Okay, so we have one light pole that is to the east, I would say northeast corner of the property. And then we have a combination of a building-mounted light fixture. Like one to the north, I would say just northwest corner of the proposed addition. So we have a combination of a building-mounted light fixture and a light pole. And if you look at the coverages, they give enough coverage, the light illumination into the parking area, which meets the safety standards and criteria.
Okay, and just as a follow-up, is there any lighting proposed in the back of the building where the new walkway leads to the garbage area? Is there any lighting there?
Yeah, there will be a light fixture, it's one of, like, it will be like the typical residential-type fixture. It can be a sensor light that when somebody's going to drop or drop the garbage in the area or going towards the back, it will light up. It's a typical residential fixture that we can propose there. Not something that will emit too much light or to spill the light across the property line.
Understood, yeah. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I have a couple of questions. I want to go back to number 13 on the engineer's review. I think his comment was only directed during construction activities and I'll certainly admit there isn't a lot of pedestrian traffic on Sherman, but there are the parking areas. So I'm assuming there is some pedestrian traffic. How are you proposing during construction for people to get around the required area for soil conservation district?
Okay, yeah, we can, if you go to our sheet number SO1, which is sheet number six. Okay, if you zoom up the site area, yeah, a little bit more, I think, the whole site area, the lot pretty much, the entire lot. Okay, if you look at this one, like again, as per one of the requirement by soil erosion during construction, we have to provide cell fence around the property. And again, the purpose of that cell fence is to protect any dirt or any migration of water and dirt, but that cell fence is about 18 inches high. And that is one of those typical black fence that you see. But during the construction process for the entire duration, there will be a fence all around demarcating the area.
Now, that's not my concern. I understand you have to do that. It's the construction entrance and the, what I'm going to call gravel that you have to put down. So the trucks, as you said, can't, don't carry dirt onto the street. And how are people going to walk around that? Because it's, you know, my observation of these over time, it's not something that if you're wearing good shoes, you want to walk over without risking twisting your ankle.
Yeah, what we can do is like we can leave a path open for the people who are utilizing that sidewalk. I would say like we can cut down the stone, the gravel top, like as a property line. And anything outside the property line, we can, since we're going to have a fence there anyway, like in that area. So we can just leave that, not to put the gravel in that area so that the people who are walking here, like using the sidewalk, they can still walk through.
Okay, then I, it's not, there are some large trees currently on the property. And, you know, there's a bunch of weed trees as well, but there are two large trees along the bay frontage, and it's not clear from your plans whether those trees are staying or being removed.
All the existing trees that are on, the shade trees on the streets, they are staying. Actually, what we are also proposing is we are adding one more tree. There is currently a blank space, like there is a tree that used to be there, it's not there anymore. We are replacing that and we are planting one additional shade tree along bay.
Okay, and then because I can't tell, I couldn't tell when I was at the site where the property line is versus the former railroad right-of-way, there's some large trees along that right-of-way, you know, on the upper part. Are what are you, are those on the property or are they on the, at this point Norfolk Southern's property?
Actually, if you look at, like, again, when you're looking at the plan, like you see the circles around the trees, those are the large trees I think that you were referring to, and again, they will be protected during construction. So there was.
This is along the property line to the former railroad?
Yeah, again, that area is like, the area right next to the railroad property is not going to be disturbed during construction. So any trees that is not going to be part of the building envelope will be protected.
Okay. I have no further questions. Are there any members of the public?
I just wanted to make note of one item if I could. On the lighting plan, we discussed the pole-mounted fixture that's here in this area. I do just want to note for the benefit of the board that it's 281-8, 281-8.3C, freestanding light poles around the perimeter of the parking ladder to be aligned with this, the line between spaces. And given the comment on the overhang, it's to protect the light pole fixture. And given the situation of this, maybe beneficial to shift it either to the left or to the right to align with the line between spaces, just to protect the pole.
Yeah, I think that's not a problem. We will, yeah, it's probably, we're talking about three or four feet or five feet in here, three feet on one side and four feet on the other side. So yeah, that can be accommodated. We will just run the elimination and just make sure whichever makes the best sense, we can align it with the parking.
Right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just have another question, if I may. For Mr. Khan, the, for stormwater management, so you reduced the amount of asphalt in pervious surfaces. Did you adjust, or you're keeping the same volume for the drywall?
That is correct, like even though we reduced the impervious coverage less than what was proposed originally, but we kept the sizing of the drywall the same as it was originally designed for larger impervious coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, all right. Any other questions from board members? Are there any members of the public who have questions for the engineer?
All members of the public, I'll be unmuting your lines. If you have a question regarding the engineer's testimony, please state your name, and I'll bring you into the meeting to ask your question. All members of the public are now unmuted. Please state your name if you have a question. Again, at this time, we're taking any questions regarding the engineer's testimony on this application. If you have a question, please state your name. I'm not hearing any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do you have any further witnesses?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any members of the public who have any comments concerning the application, any testimony? Anything you want to say? This is your chance to say anything you have concerning the application, whether in favor and support for just commenting on it.
I do have, hang on one second. Yeah, I do have a question from someone in the public, so I have a raised hand.
Is this a question, Graham, or is this?
I'm not quite sure, we'll find out. Ms. Leonard, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Ms. Leonard, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Yes, my hand is raised. I don't know if you can see me, but my hand is raised, and I swear to tell the truth.
Okay, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hillary Leonard, 83 Bay Street, Unit 1, Montclair, New Jersey, 07042.
Okay, you have a question or a comment or a statement?
I have a comment or a statement.
Okay, go ahead.
I live at 83 Bay Street. I've lived here since July of 2014. And as you are probably all aware, Bay Street is not the most scenic property or street in Montclair. And the property that the owner is proposing to redevelop is probably the ugliest, most offensive building on the street. And I would like to just say that as a resident of this street, I wholly support this individual's efforts that they're going through to make a dramatic improvement on my street where I live.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who have any comments concerning the application?
Yeah, all members of the public are now unmuted. Please state your name if you'd like to make a comment on the. Again, the meeting is now open to any comments on the subject application. If you have any comments that you'd like to make at this time, please state your name. Mr. Chairman, I'm not hearing any requests for comment at this time.
Do you have any closing remarks?
Just a brief statement, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A few brief final words in support of this application. As you've heard over two meetings, the applicant is before the board tonight seeking approval to convert an existing two-family dwelling into a four-family dwelling now with four two-bedroom dwelling units. The current building at 92 Bay Street is in a state of disrepair and has been for some time. The conversion before the board tonight would result in a significant aesthetic improvement to the building, the entire site for various landscape and lighting improvements. Moreover, the drainage improvements proposed will result in less stormwater sheet flowing up the current parking area during rain events. And the increased size of the building will be more than made up for by the drainage improvements designed and testified to by the site engineer. As the board is aware, the property is located in the Pine Street Historic District and has undergone an extensive review before the Historic Preservation Commission. After receiving a good deal of input from the members of the Historic Preservation Commission and the experts, we believe that the improvements proposed and designed of the building will be in staying with the character of the Pine Street Historic District and will at the same time bring deteriorating structure back to life. Should this application be approved, I anticipate that the additional apartment units provided would be in high demand and would appeal to both healthcare workers and New York City commuters due to the proximity of the nearby hospital and train station. Frankly, I could not imagine a better place to convert an existing two-family to a four-family and restore building within historic district at the same time. During the course of this presentation, on our first hearing and tonight, we've heard several comments from members of the board. We certainly believe we've addressed these comments, and we will continue to address the comments specifically tonight. Board member Fleishman made a great comment regarding the location of the trash enclosure. And we will rotate the location of the trash enclosure to permit tenants to access the parking lot from the new rear entrance, or rather, side entrance. We will also relocate the light pole to align with the parking space markings. And Mr. Chairman's comment, we will limit the gravel at the driveway during construction to the property line to allow pedestrians to pass on the sidewalk during construction. On the basis of the testimony and plans presented, I believe sufficient proofs have been provided to the board to justify the granting of site plan approval and the variance requested. And I respectfully ask the board to approve the present application. Thank the board again for its time.
Okay, we'll start discussion with Mr. Moore.
I am in favor of the application. This looks, you've made considerable changes since the last time you came in front of the board with our recommendations. And I believe that it will be an enhancement to the street that it's on and will not be a hardship to its neighbors. So I am in favor and great design.
Okay, Mr. Church?
I am also in favor of the application. Am I open?
Yes.
I'm in favor of the application as presented with the corrections made. It is an enhancement to that area. Certainly, it's an attractive building, and I would be in favor. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo the comments of my colleagues. I believe also that the design is quite attractive and will be an enhancement for none of the neighborhood, but also for the community at large. And so I'm very, very pleased with this proposal. I think it's been examined very carefully, so I'm supportive.
And Mr. Caulfield?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also in favor of this application. I think the applicant has demonstrated the willingness to work with the board in addressing some of the comments and the changes. So in general, I'm in favor of this application.
I'm also in favor of the application. I think the applicant has demonstrated that the improvements that are proposed here are justified the deviations from the conditional use requirements. I, the, let me go through conditions that he complied with condition number six of the engineer's review, which is the well removal that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy that he submit demonstration to the township that the well has been properly closed. Condition seven of the engineer's report. And that. Okay, and then for, condition 14, that he provide a pathway as he testified to. for condition fourteen that he provide a pathway as he testified for pedestrians to get through the construction entrance safely. I wish I could do that the be conditioned on reor- reor any the trash enclosure. So there's a path feeding from that side entrance going to the parking area that he relocate the light pole. So it aligns with the line between parking spaces that along the side property line bordering the former railroad right of way that none of the large trees be removed. That he return to the Historic Preservation Commission as requested in their condition number five, that he comply with the township's affordable housing ordinance. And and that the condens- this is from last time, and I forgot to ask this time that the condenser units be located in accordance with the ordinance. I think the only question in my mind is the fence variant. You know, I I'm not sure what the, you know, if the former railroad line was that great, I would have a greater understanding wanting the higher fence. But I'm not sure any reason's been given to deviate from the ordinance other than keeping the fence at the same height. And that's the same argument we get with everyone who wants to have a higher than permitted fence in front of the rear property, rear line of the house. Okay, any other discussion from board members?
Graham, let me just
Neither chance to comment yet.
Oh, Joe, sorry. I got a little note to myself and
No, no, I I'm in favor of the application with with the commitments that have been made by the attorney on behalf of their client. I'm in favor of that. You've raised the issue of the fence. I I'm not someone who likes high fences other than in areas where they're permitted. So I I would probably agree with the the chair that we should not raise the fence in that area. If anything, it's going to be sort of a public park and a public way. If it becomes anything, it's certainly not running trains at the moment. It's never likely to run trains again in the future. So I guess I would agree with Chair Harrison that might not be worthwhile approving a variance on the fence line forward of the the rear of the house. So those are my comments. Otherwise, I'm in favor of the project.
Okay, can I also ask a question? Graham, in your most recent planning memo dated July nine, you've got a number of comments at the end. Do we need to carry forth any of those as conditions?
Let me just pull that up so I can review with you once, one second.
Believe you largely addressed those.
Yes, I think that largely these have been addressed at this point.
I added the condition on the affordable housing.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yep. Yes, everything's been addressed.
So the only, as I would understand it to the degree there's any discussion, it's related to the fence unless all of our fellow board members agree with the chair and I, and if they don't, now would be a good time to hear it because otherwise we'll seek a resolution without approval of that variance.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application with the conditions as stated by the chair and deny the application relating to the variance on the fence.
I second. Graham, you want to call the roll?
Yes, we'll call the roll. Okay, Mr. Vera.
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the applicant, truly appreciate the board's time and efforts. You're gonna really appreciate finished product. Thank you very much.
Go do it quickly.
You got it. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Okay, the next application is that of Malgozada Dolgan, trustee of sixty-nine Mission Street Trust, owner of property at sixty-nine Mission Street. And Malgozada's Dolgan trustee, seventy-one Mission Street Trust, owner of property at seventy-one Mission Street. Does the properties are block three thousand one hundred eleven lots twenty-two and twenty-three. This is an application for variance or renovations during existing two-family home located sixty-nine Mission Street and the construction of a new two-family home located at seventy-one Mission Street. Properties are located in the R two-two family zone district. The applicant requests C one variance relief from pre-existing non-conformity for lot area, five thousand square feet is required, whereas thousand three hundred fifty-three square feet is existing for lot twenty-two, four thousand four hundred ninety-eight square feet is existing for lot twenty-three. Pre-existing non-conformity for lot width sixty feet is required, whereas twenty-five feet is existing for lot twenty-two and twenty-five feet existing for lot twenty-three. Variants is requested maximum width of a principal building, Montclair code section three forty-seven dash forty-five V one. The variance from the required minimum front yard setback of twenty-five feet. The applicant proposes a front yard setback of eight point seven feet for lot twenty-two and eight point seven feet for lot twenty-three, Montclair code section three forty-seven dash forty-five. E for variance of excellent building coverage of twenty-five percent of the applicant's proposed building coverage of thirty-two point eight percent for lot twenty-two and twenty-seven percent for lot twenty-three. App, so three point six and three point nine side yard setbacks for lot twenty-two and three point four and seven point two side yard setbacks for lot twenty-three, Montclair code required. Totally lost place here. Section three forty-seven dash one of four variants from the required minimum setback of one foot for driveways and four feet for parking areas. The applicant proposes a zero foot setback for the driveway. And a one point six foot parking area setback for the parking area on lot two and three point four feet for the parking area on lot twenty-three. The applicant proposes a side yard setback of three feet for the air conditioning units at the rear of lot twenty-three. Montclair code variance, Montclair code section three forty-seven dash forty-six A three from the required rear yard setback for accessories, so six feet. App proposes an air conditioning unit to setback of half a foot for lot twenty-two and four point three feet for lot twenty-three. The applicant also requests waivers of the site plan standards. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes. Mr. Vetery is here for the applicant this evening.
Vetery, are you ready? Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that comprehensive overview of the variances. Thank you, Graham. Just a little housekeeping. So to enter my appearance officially, John Vetery for the applicant, Malgozada Dolgan with respect to sixty-nine and seventy-one Mission Street. We got through quite a bit of, I'll call it testimony at the May fifth meeting relative to this application. And then, Mr. Chairman, I believe it was yourself who brought up the issue of an encroachment with respect to fifty-one New Street. I I'm treating this as even though we went through all the architectural changes. If it pleases the board, I'm going to have the architect just run through them again, even though it'll be a little bit like deja vu all over again, to quote one of our more famous former residents of the town here. But I think we should just to create the record here in that this application has nothing to do with fifty-one New Street. We have been in dialogue with the township attorney regarding coming up with a resolution to that encroachment and hope to be back before the board. Once that is settled, I'm not sure what iteration it will take, whether it's land acquisition or an easement or whatnot, but that has nothing to do with the application tonight. So this, and in many ways, I think the that application, there were some favorable things about sharing the lots. But I I think this is a much improved application as this stands alone and avoids some of the concerns that were raised early on in that meeting. So if it pleases the board, I would like to call up the architect to run through this, even though nothing on the plans, the architectural plans have changed whatsoever. The only changes that we have on this application are the site plan applications. And with that said, I would like to call up Adam Lasota as the architect to prepare the plans before you this evening.
All right, Mr. Lasota, you're still under oath. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
I just state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name is Adam Lasota. My address is twenty-six fifty Frankfurt Avenue in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Is a code one nine one two five.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, do you do you want me to qualify him again or is he so qualified?
He's he's been qualified. It's a continued hearing, so you can proceed.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lasota, you've gone through this for the board, but please go through the plans as it was back in May, just to refresh everyone's recollection.
Thank you so much, John, and thank you to the board. Let's make this quick and but let's make it concise as well. So here we have sixty-nine and seventy-one Mission Street, sixty-nine on your right, seventy-one on your left. Just as a quick refresher, we, the sixty-nine on the right is going to be a renovation of it, of the existing structure within addition. And then the seventy-one Mission Street, the building on your left here on the rendering is going to be a new construction. So Graham, if you can go on to the next page for me, please. Thank you. So here we're going to be doing basements, finished basements for both of the units. They are going to be open finished plans. We are not proposing any bedrooms in the basements for either of the units. So we have a total of four units, two for sixty-nine and two for seventy-one. Graham, if you go on to the next page for me, please. Here, one of the things that I pointed out last time, I wanted to point out on this one was on the alignment of the front porches. The, as you can see on the the upper plan, which is sixty-nine Mission Street, that's the existing front porch line and of course, the existing main facade line. What we are proposing is that the new construction at seventy-one Mission Street, thank you, Graham, for the beautiful green line there. We are aligning both of those front porches in order to provide a continuing, a continuing of the urban landscape there with the front porches. And on seventy-one Mission Street, we are aligning the main facade wall along with its neighbor down on seventy-three Mission Street. Graham, if you can kind of scoop the whole drawing up a little bit. You'll see that, you'll see that seventy-one Mission Street is going to align with seventy-three Mission Street. I drew a little line there just to give you that. So again, we're we're making sure that seventy-one Mission Street is placed in a very strategic way, urbanistically and architecturally to continue that current street landscape. And of course, here you're going to see, you're seeing the shared driveway in the middle. I'm going to save those comments for our esteemed engineer to comment on and its placement and of its size. So you can see here on both sixty-nine and seventy-one, open floor plans, generous kitchens, and really just keeping with that open concept theme that, you know, is very prevalent today and that, you know, it's a great place to live too, and you could be able to see right through your entire first floor unit. So Graham, if you go on to the next floor for me, please. Here, each of them are going to be having two bedrooms, one facing the front and then one in the middle. Of course, similar to what we have previously had proposed at Mission, at Washington Street, if you remember, they are both each unit is, one is facing the front and one is facing the rear of the property. And there's only a division between the units right down the middle with a party wall condition. So again, same condition that we're proposing here at sixty-nine and at seventy-one. So you can see how on the second floor, on each of the units, we have two generous sized bedrooms, a shared bathroom and a laundry closet for all four units. So and then Graham, could you go to the next story for me, please? So here we have the attic story. Again, we made sure to not exceed the fifty percent of the exterior wall space in order to to qualify as still that half-story space. And we are utilizing this half-story, the kind of the finished attic space with some of the dormers to include the entire master suite, which would be the master bedroom, a walk-in closet, and also a generous master bathroom as well. If you go on to the next page for me, please, we're going to go through the elevations. So here we're proposing, you're seeing the front elevations on the left-hand side, that those are going to be facing Mission Street. The rear elevations are going to be facing the rear parking lot. Again, we wanted them also, these pair of buildings to be, again, designing them as pairs, you know, so they are close in look, but they're not identical. We wanted to kind of propose maybe some different window layouts and different ways that we're showing the front porch. But again, a lot of the same flavor, just a little bit of a different execution on sixty-nine and seventy-one Mission Street, both looking at it from the front and of the rear elevations. If you go to the next page for me, please, Graham. On the side elevations, these are treated a little more similarly, but we wanted to make sure to show on these that we are still providing a lot of windows in order to bring in natural light to a lot of these spaces, including those bedroom spaces I spoke about earlier. And you're seeing the little kind of black squares there. Those are going to be down sconces that are going to illuminate both the walkways that are on the outsides of the properties and also along the driveway. So this way we are bringing in artificial light at night for safety purposes for both the vehicular access in the middle and for the pedestrian walkways along the kind of the upper and the lower sides of the lots. So and go on to the next page for me, please. You'll see the other side elevations again, it's kind of like seeing the the same sides on both of them. Again, you're seeing the front porches there on the left-hand side. You see how the site does grade up, and we do have a little bit of a rear porch also covered entryway for the units entered at the rear of the property. Then finally, if you go to the last page for me, please, two more. So here we just have some cross-sections to kind of show you the sectional quality of the spaces, both, you know, at the peak where we're just finishing the spaces under the roof. And of course, on the right-hand side, you see where the we're doing shed dormers in order for us to provide, you know, some quality ceiling heights and be able to house some great spaces for the master bedrooms in that attic space. And then finally, on the last page, the last two pages are going to be cross-sections through both sixty-nine Mission Street, which you're seeing here. I wanted to cut a section through showing the relationship of the staircases with the units, with the dormers to show that, you know, we are still providing, you know, beyond the minimum requirements of the building code and showing just how we're able to fit kind of all these beautiful aspects of the of these units, you know, both on a sectional quality here at sixty-nine Mission Street. And then Graham, if you go to the next page here at seventy-one Mission Street, again, very similar sectional qualities. So again, try to make a nice brief overview. I hope that I was able to kind of refresh everyone's memory. And thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Adam. I have no questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Harrison.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
Just just a small question for the architect. Why not, since I always forget the numbers, since the smaller building, the narrow abilities, the way I would put it, why not just align the rears of the two buildings and get some extra space back into the kitchen, which is the primary space that squeezed down? It doesn't, it wouldn't cost you anything. I'm just, I was surprised with every other alignment you did that you kept the length of the two buildings or the main parts of it exactly the same when you couldn't extend it, the thinner building, another foot or two. That's a tweak. I don't really care. It makes no difference.
No, 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 it's it's a good comment. I agree, but we're already pretty tight there in the backyard, especially with the sidewalk walking around the porch. So I'd rather, if the layout works with a little bit tighter and give a little bit more room for the pedestrians to walk, especially for that unit at seventy-one at the back, especially where Graham drew his line. Giving that little extra room there and not impeding on especially the parking, that first parking space that you're seeing there on the left-hand side of my drawing, I think that was a little bit more important.
All right, just out of curiosity, just a quick one. Are the two end conditions in the past you've shown exactly the same size on both sides?
They they are, but we wanted to scoot in that one to in order to allow that swing for the parking.
That's fine. That was, that was the question I had. I just figured you'd give it a few more feedback to the to the smaller units. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleischer.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Just, just one question for you. On the the design of the kitchens, I I, it appears as though the the four, looking at the two buildings, so the four kitchens are all in a sense facing each other. Is that correct? I'm seeing that correctly, right? I mean, the sinks all all face out to the driveway.
Yes, all the sinks face towards the driveway. Correct. Yes, all the sinks face towards the driveway, correct.
Okay, and then the, and then the, the cooking area is, how does the cooking area vent out? I guess it's really the question I'm working on. Do they all vent to the shared driveway?
We haven't worked out, we haven't worked out those details yet. We are not, again, it all depends on what kind of appliance package we do, whether we do a, an actual hood with a mechanical vent, or if we do do a recirculating vent. A recirculating vent would not have any kind of ventilation actually going into the exterior, so not sure exactly yet.
Okay, so I just lift that up because I think it just seems to me that, that if all of those kitchens essentially vented into the same area, it could be disturbing to any number of the apartments, as well as intensify scent and heat potentially in that, in that middle zone. So just would call it out for your attention.
If that's the case, if that troubles the board, we could make sure that any kind of ventilation could happen actually towards the alleyways instead of all going towards the driveways, or split, maybe one goes to the driveway, one goes to the alleyway on both cases.
I think that would make more sense. I'd ask for that consideration.
Okay, absolutely.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, Chair.
Mr. Vieira, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any questions. Are there any members of the public who have any questions?
All members of the public, I'll be unmuting lines. If you have a question of Mr. Lasota's testimony regarding the architecture of this application, please state your name and I'll bring you into the meeting. If you have a question at this time, please state your name. All lines are now unmuted. Again, if there's any member of the public with questions at this time for the architect, please state your name and we'll bring you in for a test or question. Not hearing any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you want to call your next witness?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Our next witness is David Fantina, Fantina Engineering.
And David, you testified at the last hearing also, correct?
I don't think I did, actually.
You did or did not?
I don't think I did.
I don't believe we got to Dave.
Okay, so David, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
David Fantina, F as in Frank, A-N-T-I-N-A, 15 Sunset Drive, Bernardsville, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Dave, if you would, give the board the benefit of your educational professional experience, and I know you have testified before this board many times before.
I have, I'm still an engineer in good standing. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1987. I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in civil environmental engineering, both from Marcus University. I've been the proprietor of Fantina Engineering since 2001, and I did prepare the plans that are before you tonight.
We'll accept him as an expert engineer.
Thank you. Mr. Fantina, if you would, go through the, go through the plans, lots of changes from the last plan, so we'll treat this completely freshly, since, as you noted, I don't think you gave any testimony at the last meeting.
Yes, I see Graham has got my proposed conditions plan up. Thank you, thank you, Graham, that's what I'll be using to do the testimony. As the architect said, we're going to be renovating and putting addition on the building at 69 Mission. 71, our building will be taken down, and a new building will be constructed on that property. Proposing is a shared driveway between the buildings, about 11 feet wide, which is certainly much wider than the, than the access grade to get to the rear of the properties now, which is maybe seven feet wide. So this would be a much better situation. This is a much more formal cooking area, it'll open up in the back to a total of eight parking spaces, four for each of the lots. That is in accordance with what's required by the requirements. Four will be an easement, and four in the rear will be dedicated to 71 Mission. The four in the front will be dedicated for 69 Mission on which they're located. What we've attempted to do, although they have shared driveway, some shared parking, we've attempted to separate the two properties as much as possible, and we've accomplished that by separating the store water management. Each property has its own driveway now, the driveway each have their own outlet onto the street. Each one has a walkway, pedestrian walkway along the side of the building for access to the road and to the front unit. There will be separate AC units, the AC unit servicing 69 Mission will be on, on that property, and Graham's showing you there, at 71 Mission, they'll be on that property. So we've attempted to make each, each of these properties stand on their own to the maximum extent practical. Before we started, the chairman read a laundry list of variances. I don't really think I need to reiterate them, but I will just point out to the board that I'm not sure the board's aware of this, while that sounds like a lot of non-conformities, it's simply a function of the fact that we have two very narrow lots here, two non-conforming buildings in their side yards and in their front yards, and everything we're doing here is making the situation better. We're making it a much more, a much cleaner plan, and this is a really nice urban redevelopment. The main upgrade is in the beautiful buildings that the architect showed you a few minutes ago. The building itself is in need of a lot of refreshment, and by adding curb, drainage improvements, and all of these, the situation's going to be much nicer than it is today. It'd be a much, much better plan, not only inside, but also outside.
Dave, you've had the opportunity to review the letter from Graham on this matter, and there was a question with respect to the location of the garbage. Can you point that out on the site?
Yes, actually, there would be garbage, there's no dumpsters, these are only, you know, two, two family homes, and what we've provided is a location behind each of the buildings, say, Graham, thank you for circling them, where we're going to have trash cans and recycling bins. That area is fairly tight, but as Mr. Lasota said, that's why we didn't want to make the buildings any bigger, because there is room now there for, for those trash and recycling bins, and that's also the way that people will access the rear units.
And also with respect to the walkways that are on opposite sides of the building, just discuss that.
Yes, what we've done is we've added walkways, as you say, each side of the building. Obviously, there's a driving lane between the two buildings, but in applications in this township, in other applications, the board has, only they didn't want there to be, people have to walk down that, that shared driveway. So we've provided concrete walkways on each side of the buildings, so people from the rear, back there, can get to their front door, or can walk out to the road if they feel the need to.
And there, with the relocation of the air conditioning units to the rear, they're on, those sidewalks are unobstructed.
That's correct.
Thank you. There's another comment here with respect to an easement agreement, which we have done on several other matters, and we would have this thing here, and that would also be, we would add a parking easement as well, to give 71 Mission Street the right to have the two spaces parked on the 69 Mission Street property.
That is correct.
I'm sorry, four spaces.
Four spaces, correct, yes.
Okay, I think that addresses that. I have no further questions of Mr. Fantina.
And Mr. Fleischer, do you have?
Yeah, can you be, I mean, the problem I'm having in the arrangement, which now, I now understand is that the person in the walkways essentially walks around the porch, then steps between the trash containers and the, to get to the stairways essentially. And given that everybody's walking on the outside, I'm trying to understand why not let them go up the steps without having to walk essentially through the trash containers? Maybe that's not, maybe my point's not clear. In other words, why not move the porch more, the porch somewhat more centered and allow the stairs to come directly off the walkway? It just, it's a detail, it's not critical, and it's an architectural question as well, but right now, someone comes up the walkway, walks around the porch, has to go to where the trash containers are in order to get to the steps into their unit. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me when they could have gone up the stairs directly and, and gotten there, and then that whole area could have been dealt with as the porch. In other words, the steps could have been in the zone where it says prop concrete walk, you know, proposed concrete walkway, the steps even could have been there, but instead, it's just an odd situation to make them walk past the trash cans in order to get to the steps to their entry to there.
Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought the thinking of that was that the majority of the use will come from the residents that are parking in the rear, and that was more convenient for them. Is that correct?
That is what I'm thinking. I can say a couple of things about that. The short answer is that we could relocate entry if you felt strongly about it, that's, the architectural plans do have that.
I wasn't asking you about.
In addition to that, I think you're describing somebody coming up from Mission Street and walking around the porch, is that correct?
Well, that's the walkway we give them to come from the street if they're commuting or anything else, they would come up from the sidewalk, they're walking on the sidewalk. My only point is, right now, in order to get to the, the trash containers are essentially directly in front of the walkway, in front of the steps. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but.
I believe.
It's a design issue, and also zoning issue per se, but, and, and let me throw just one other question there. The AC units for the larger dwellings, 69 Mission Street, are all the way up against the property line. And do we have that as a variance?
That is a variance.
And is there any way on the wider property of not having to do that? I'm not sure what the answer is, by the way, but I think we're always trying to shield the AC units from adjacent property owners, and here we have it right up against the fence.
Well, there would be a six-foot-high PVC privacy fence, which, that would be seen, and that will also cut down the noise. As far as relocating them, we went through a number of options. Really, the only one that we could see that would make any sense would be to move them over adjacent to the other ones, but then we're, again, adding, we're putting that service 69 onto 71, we wanted to.
I understand, I understand that part. I was hoping that some, I mean, what happens is all the parking for both units is on 69's property. All the, and the AC units are on both properties when there's actually obviously considerably more property next to 71, and there is sufficient opportunity to shield them. So it's not just these are acting as totally independent properties, they're dependent on each other for their parking and everything else, and it just seems to me there is, there is some minor tweaks that would allow us to get a, the AC units in a way that they're actually shielded from the adjacent property and essentially shielded from the parking lot as well. And I don't know whether that's flipping the, the parking areas onto the side of 71, or I'm not sure what would work, but it just seems right now that 69's absorbing all the parking, and then their units get stuck against the fence, not because I care about their units, but I do care about maintaining the sense of a buffer between air conditioning units and someone else's backyard, so to speak. So that's, that's two questions related to the entry and to the air conditioning units. And I, anybody else might want to follow up on it, or the architect might comment on the stairways and the porch. That's, that's up to you guys. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I will say, as far as the easements on 69, we felt that having the six-foot-high privacy fencing there, it'd buffer them. And as far as your comment or question, comment slash question about the garbage cans, I think that there are some tweaks that we can do to make that a cleaner situation.
I'll leave it at that. I don't know if the architect wants a comment, but we'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Yeah, Adam, do you want to, do you want to speak to the stairs? I mean, I think we could probably relocate that.
Yes, we can, because of the fact that we have an open floor plan and we have an entire facade that is available to us, ideally placing a, a door entry in the middle of the floor plan does make challenges in terms of the furniture layout currently as it's shown. You know, you open the door, you're already on target on the staircase leading upwards into the unit. So ideally, the stair is placed, the entryway, the door is placed in the, in the ideal locations for both options.
Yep.
We could place it in the middle, but it would be a detriment to the architecture, but it would be an improvement on the civil engineering side. So again, it's.
I don't have an answer for you, so I'll leave it to you.
It's, I mean, it's one of those things.
It's not, it's not a game break, so that's not the issue, it just, it seems a little odd. I am concerned about the AC units being right on the wall.
So I think, especially, we, I think we have enough, and I think, you know, David made a great testimony to, you know, the trash cans and everything, there is enough room for the trash cans where you're not going to be walking right next to the trash cans when you walk into those rear units.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, if I may, Mr. Fleischer, because we did have all four air conditioning units located there in the previous iteration, and one of the other comments that Mr. Fantina had raised was, you know, creating a farm there, and was that equitable to have four units in the back of a property? Neither home that is on New Street is close to those units. Was it fair to have four in like an air conditioning farm, or to more equitably split them between the two lots? They were originally on the side, and that's very close to the other home and would be, I think, more of a detriment to those neighbors. We thought that this was the best way of putting it, and then as Mr. Fantina testified to, having additional easements to run electrical lines, et cetera, we just thought was that there was enough, you're right that there are lots of shared structure here, but we were trying to mitigate that as much as possible. So for what it's worth, that was.
That's fine, if others, if others have comments on it, I'll leave it to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
Joe Fleischer actually asked my question, so thank you.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions? Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Mr. Vieira, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm going to return to the question on the air conditioning units. I mean, I, I mean, normally when people are coming in for variances for the air conditioning units, they're trying, they're giving us justifications to proximity to whatever location on the house to facilitate the units working. Now, you're, particularly in terms of the two front units, you're trying to get them as far away as possible, not going to go into the technical workings of that works, but, you know, you're placing these much further from these units than they are from the houses on New Street, you know, certainly compared to what was proposed on the New Street lot that was originally part of the application, and, you know, I And, you know, I assume not much is going to change in terms of the size of that new. And I, I just, you know, it's something that, you know, we've tried to avoid the units are not quiet here. You know, I think, you know, I mean, to be very honest about it and which would also address the problem Mr. Fleischer raised about the the trash and recycling bins, the, you know, I would have, I think I would have been happier granting a variance than allowing one less parking space than that's required. And I think there's probably a better justification for that, given proximity to bus and rail that these units have than giving a variance to air conditioning units. And if you, you know, if you eliminated that space, it's closest to the house and move, you could do it. And then you wouldn't need the backup. You could expand the area behind both houses, have room for the trash, have room for the air conditioning unit. I think ends up with much better design. And then, then if you do do this as proposed. So do you have any response to that?
Only, only that you are correct in that what we've done is attempted to avoid a parking variance because I know parking is at a premium in this neighborhood. And we thought that we were being good neighbors by providing all of the parking that was required. The reason that we have the, that the air conditioning units are tight and the reason that they're tight to the back and that there's not a lot of room for the trash cans is because obviously we need the space for the parking. That was the decision we made. Absolutely correct. If we eliminated one space and the space is the one that you indicated, there would be room for the AC units and ample room for the for the trash receptacles, but we would have the one, the one parking variance.
Are there any members of the public who have any questions concerning for the engineer on the application?
All members of the public. I'll be unmuting lines to welcome any questions of the engineer on this application. Please state your name if you do have a question. This time, all lines are unmuted. If you have a question, please state your name. Mr. Chairman, I'm not hearing any questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Viteri, do you have any witnesses?
No, we have no further witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are there any members of the public who have any comments, testimony, statements? Anything you want to say about the application whatsoever?
Hey, all members of the public, if you have any comments on this application at this time, please state your name. We'll bring you in to make a comment. All lines are unmuted. We're welcoming any comments on this application at this time. One last call for any public comments on this application. Mr. Chairman, I'm not hearing any comments at this time.
Do you want to do a brief summation?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So the application before you tonight has vast improvements over the original application. We have many aesthetic improvements to the site as well as significant drainage improvements to the site. And, you know, a huge parking improvement. Currently, there's really no parking on this site. So we've established a plan that has no parking variance, which is not easy to do. It would be the applicant's preference to leave the eight spaces. But if it pleases the board, that if the board feels that this is a better application to remove that, the last space. She does wish to point out that she is the owner of one of the properties in the rear at 51 New Street. And the other property, I'm not sure what the property address is, but the one where the, that is directly behind 69, that home is located quite a, quite a distance. And she doesn't believe that there would be any detriment to leaving that and that in that neighborhood parking, even though it's only one space, parking is really at a premium. But if it pleases the board, that is a reasonable condition and we would accept that as well. So I think in terms of the improvements that have been made and the concessions that have been made by the applicant and the testimony that's been put on by both of our witnesses, that we provided sufficient proof and justifications for the variances that are being requested and hope that the board sees fit to approve this application as a continuation of the redevelopment of this area by many applicants, including Ms. Dolgan. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start discussion with Mr. Church.
Hey, I'm on, right? I'm generally in favor of the application with the proviso. I think that there's parking, one parking space should be removed in order to bring those AC units closer. I'm sorry. Can you hear?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would improve the application with the proviso that one parking space be removed. Two parking space, no, one parking space removed to bring the air conditioning units closer to the building. Because I can't see how the location now benefits if anything goes wrong with those units for repair or maintenance. So I would like to see them moved a little closer to the building if possible. And other than that, I would approve the application. I see the design of the buildings are, is perfect. They're beautiful buildings. And as previously done by this applicant, the buildings have enhanced the quality of life in that area generally. And so I would be in favor of it. I'd like the applicant to consider moving air conditioners closer to the building because I can't see them being that far back that they would be beneficial to the occupants if anything went wrong with them because of the distance. The repairs would be closer. So that's my, I'm in favor of the application.
Okay, Mr. McCullough.
I'm generally in favor of the proposal. And the only thing that I would note is just my earlier comment about alternating ventilation from the kitchen areas, but otherwise, I think this is a really good enhancement to the neighborhood. And I would support this application.
Mr. Caulfield?
I think one, I think one last parking space with the ACs moved up there and better ways of putting the trash is a better solution for this property. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all in general in favor of this application. I do agree with the other board members that if the AC unit can be relocated to the one parking space, it'd be a huge improvement for troubleshooting and, you know, repairing the units as well. So in general, I'm in favor.
Mr. Fleischer?
I'm in favor of the application with the suggestion the chair made to eliminate the parking space nearest to 69 and allow that zone on both sides to be used for both the air conditioning units and the trash receptacles, which addresses my earlier commentary about having to basically squeeze between the trash receptacles and the stairway. I think having a little more, a little more space adjacent to the buildings serves multiple purposes, all of which are good. And I think I'd rather grant a variance for one less parking space than for the air conditioning units and the current arrangement on the site of the trash enclosure, the air conditioning units and the entry. I think eliminating that first space immediately adjacent to 69 provides and, and the, what I'll call the turnaround on the opposite side, the side next to 71. I think that provides the kind of space I think I'd like to see between the parking and the trash and the AC unit. So I would like to see that as a condition for the approval. I'm happy with Mr. McCullough's recommendation of a condition on the areas as well. But I'd like to see that site plan modified and one space eliminated in order to bring the AC units and the trash closer to the buildings and together.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
I'm generally in favor of the application, given the conditions stated by my colleagues. I also believe that this will be a, an asset aesthetically on the street and which it resides.
Okay. I'm also in favor of the application. As I indicated, I, you know, I think there's really been some justification other than to provide the required parking for the variance for the air conditioning unit. So I would not be in favor granting that. I think the, I think there are actually two solutions to this. One either gets the same result of eliminating the parking space that's closest to the building that's on lot 22 and, and then expanding the air conditioning into that area and having the trash and recycling units into that larger area. And then having the equivalent location, if you draw a line straight down from where the first parking space would now be to provide it for the units on lot 23. I mean, if the applicant really wants to have conforming parking, they have the solution that the property on Bay Street did was to, which was reduce the number of bedrooms. They had two, three bedroom and two bedroom, they would only need seven spaces and not need it. But having said that, I am willing to grant the variance for having seven spaces instead of the required eight for the four three bedroom units. At the conditions that they comply with the Affordable Housing Ordinance, that there be a cross easement for the shared driveway and an easement for whether they do three or four parking spaces for lot 23 and lot 22 and those easements to be shown to and approved by the board's attorney, that they relocate the ventilation for the kitchen units as Mr. McCullough described. And that would be it. Any other discussion from members of the board?
I, I'd make a motion to approve this applications with the conditions and recommendations stated by the chair and not to grant the variance for the AC units. And to consolidate the AC units and the trash receptacles in an area closer to the structures.
Second.
Good. Roll.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask one question? Does the board have a preference as to which lot gets the four spaces and which gets the three? Or is that something you would leave up to the applicant?
That is entirely up to you and the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes. We're going to do the next application so the applicant and her professionals can go home after that. And we'll take a break when we're done with that application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What we're doing. Okay, the next application is that Malgorzata Dalgans trustee for the 21 New Street Trust. This is property at 21 New Street, lot 3111, lot 73. This is an application for renovation in addition to an existing two family home. The property is located in R2, two family zone district. The applicant requests C1 variance relief from pre-existing non-conformity conformity for lot area, 5,000 square feet is required, whereas 4,263 square feet is existing, pre-existing non-conformity for lot width, 60 feet is required and 54 feet is existing. And the variance is requested for maximum width of a principal building, pre-existing non-conformity for lot depth of 79 feet. Montclair Code Section 347, that's 4531, variance required. Minimum front yard setback of 25 feet, whereas a 4.12 front yard setback required, a variance from Montclair Code Section 347, 104 for the required minimum setback of one foot for driveways. The applicant proposes a zero foot setback driveway. And the applicant also requests favors of various site plan standards or taxes paid in this order.
Yes.
Want to proceed?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Vetery on behalf of Malgorzata Dolgan, 21 New Street Trust with respect to the property at 21 New Street. The, the application is very similar to an application we have before this board for 23 New Street, the property next door. And that was, I believe, sometime last year, maybe earlier this year. The property is currently under construction. We have a, an exhibit that was sent in to Graham. I'd like to mark that as an exhibit. The engineer was over at the, at the site and there was an issue with the, with the rear foundation and a recommendation was made to make an expansion of the back. This does not cause any new variances or any changes, but just to be thorough, we were able to discover this issue in the field and have a, an updated set of plans that were submitted. It expands the rear by about 4.3 feet. And I just wanted to make sure that we add that as an exhibit.
Yes.
Mark that as A1.
Yes, that was received just for the benefit of the board and the members of the public. It was received and posted earlier today on the online application materials. And that exhibit A1 is now being shown on the screen as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Graham. So I only have one witness tonight on this application, which is the architect, Adam Lasota.
Mr. Lasota, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address.
Yes, my name is Adam Lasota and my address is 2650 Frankfurt Avenue in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. It's code 19125.
Thank you, Adam. Just for the record sake, if you would, give the board the benefit of your educational and professional experience?
Yes, I hold a professional bachelor's of architecture degree from NGIT, graduated in 2012 with honors. I also hold licenses in good standing in the state of New Jersey and in Pennsylvania. I received my architectural license in November of 2018 and at the beginning, and went off as a sole proprietor architect at the beginning of 2020.
And have you ever appeared before this board? No, just a joke. Okay.
Yes, I happily have.
Mr. Chairman, qualified?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Adam, take it away.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good to see everyone again in such a short time. So again, what we see here is 21 New Street and actually in the visualization here, the rendering. You can see on the right-hand side, a familiar project. As John had explained, that's 23 New Street, which is happily under construction right now and making leaps and bounds. And.
All of Mr. Fleischer's good comments to 23 New Street. So that's why this one is a replica of that somewhat, but that's it.
Again, we, I, it's, I've been given a great blessing in having to design a lot of buildings in pairs and presenting them to the board here at Montclair. So the theme of pairs is following us yet again on this example here. Again, 23 New Street kind of set the standard. 21 is now taking some of that language, but also giving us the additional benefit because we have a side yard where we're going to be providing the parking, which is existing. And we're utilizing some of that side yard to do some kind of fun architectural elements, which you can see here off to the side with the bays coming off of the existing structure. So Graham, if you can go on to the next page? Thank you. So on the left-hand side, we have the existing survey for reference. Again, New Street is on the left-hand side, so it is rotated. But Graham, if you could zoom in onto my proposed architectural site plan. So the key difference here is that addition of three foot four, three foot four, because it's an on coursing dimension with the masons. So the key difference here is that addition of, of three foot four, three foot four, because it's an on coursing dimension with the masons. When, when I was there and initially did some of the surveying of the property, I realized and had some visual inspections of that rear, just the rear foundation wall, you know, facing the rear, had some issues and some cracking that I had asked, you know, Malgruzada Dolgan to have her mason go through and see what are his recommendations. It, it actually dawned on us on Monday that that wall needs to be rebuilt. So with that in mind, we said, well, let's take this as an opportunity to increase the square footage in a way that would not impede on any additional variances. And especially for Mr. Fleischer, while on his comment on the last project, let's align the back of this one, 23 New Street to 21 New Street. Because at 21 New Street, we did ask for that rear addition. So again, you're seeing here on the architectural site plan how now 21 and 23 to the right and then 19, the, you can see how not only are all the front facades aligning as they were existingly, the rear facades are also aligning as well. On top of that too, the one variance that we are asking for is of that new front porch. Again, that variance is similar to what was approved at 21 New Street, which is, which is the property, sorry, 23 New Street, which is the property to the right. And you can see how, again, we're doing it in that same manner and the same dimension and the same design. So that way, we are trying to, again, do the same pairing of the designs in our approach here on the site plan. You see the one change that we did propose that per this exhibit, you're seeing that hatch area that proposed rear addition. Again, we are showing how, we are trying to align with 23 New Street. You see here on the left-hand side, the existing non-conformity with the existing asphalt pavement. We are still providing two parking spaces, which again, and we are actually removing some asphalt as well. You can see actually in the upper left-hand corner, which is the southeastern portion, we're removing some of that asphalt and bringing in more grass and more greenery in order to help to, you know, expose and reduce the impervious coverage of this site. On top of that too, because we don't have any parking facing the rear, it lends us to have those proposed condensing units not too far from the building. And we are screening them around with a number of plants and shrubbery to obstruct some of the view from the parking area and from the backyard as well. And lastly, we are removing the existing side entryway and some of that side pavement. Again, also adding more grass area, reducing the impervious coverage and limiting the entrance to each of the units right from the side record, right from the street. So if you go onto the next page for me, please, I'll kind of go through the, the architecture of these units. So one of the things, here's the proposed basement plan and the proposed first floor. I'll start at the basement plan. You see here, again, we're just creating a big open bedroom space and creating two of the egress windows. I know one of the comments and concerns on the, Graham had pointed out in his report was the egress windows from a basement level and that the elevation of the floor level of the basement and of the grade on the outside cannot exceed three foot six. In our case here, because of the fact that we have a drop-off in the existing grading, we actually are under three feet between the floor of, the finished floor of the basement and of the exterior grade, which lends itself to no need of egress wells. Thus you have good-sized windows bringing in natural light, not impeding on the egress requirements per the building code and no egress pits. So again, even though it is technically the basement story, at the back, you have a clear view outside, clear natural light and unobstructions of the egress capabilities per the building code. And on top, so towards the front of that, in the basement there, you see on the center area where we included the utilities, a full bathroom, a nice home office space down there facing towards the front. And then going to the right-hand side of the page, you'll see that shared entryway, similar to what we had previously shown the board at 23 New Street. There's a, a shared entryway and then the staircase leading up to the second unit, which we'll get to on the next page. And then, of course, the entry goes right to the left and into a nice big open floor plate, again, with a nice coat closet, little bench, kind of mudroom nook area to the right before you go through the stairs in the basement. Again, a nice-sized bathroom and a nice-sized master bedroom with, with two walk-in closets, right, for, one for each partner. Graham, if you can go onto the next, next stories. So here is unit two. Unit two is going to encompass the second floor and the finished attic space, right, the half-story. Again, similar layout on the floor plan of the second floor, similar to what's on the story below. Again, you walk up the staircase and this way you enter towards kind of the middle of that open floor plate. Again, living your own dining room, a, a nice-sized kitchen, same kind of master bedroom with the two walk-in closets and the same-sized bathroom as the unit below. And then, of course, you wrap around towards the front, going upstairs into the finished attic space, that half-story. Again, we made sure to also not exceed the 50% on the exterior wall space across the entire length of the facade. And with us doing that little bit of that three foot four addition, it actually lent us a little bit more room to increase the, the sizes of that bedroom number two that you're seeing on the upper portion of the floor plan. And also give us some more room for a nice-sized home office as well. So really, that little addition, that little kind of discovery, and by staying within the conformity of the rest of the zoning requirements, lends itself to even better architecture and even better layout, especially for each of the units. Both the first unit, which is the first floor in the basement, and the second unit, which is the second floor and the finished attic space. If you go onto the next page for me, please. So here you're seeing the, the front facade on the left facing New Street and the, and the driveway facade facing that driveway and that parking area. Once as you can see here, you see the, the little kind of protrusions out at creating some more architectural elements, carrying that same language of that front bump out that's happening on the front facade that is kind of in relationship to what's happening at 23 New Street, carrying that same language across the other sides. And some of the, and one of the comments that we picked up on another one of our hearings was, you know, the dormers that having it then dark almost kind of made them too hidden. It would be better if they were clad with a similar lighter color on other projects. So in this case, we wanted, because of these dormers are, are on both sides and are a little bit more visible, we wanted to make them lighter in color and kind of stand out and make them bright. That is something that I think the board really was looking for and actually I believe were in favor of on a previous application. So again, here, we wanted, in those big black elements, we wanted to include nice big-sized windows, bring in lots of beautiful natural light into the main spaces with the right-hand side, one on the side elevation, bringing it to the living dining spaces. And the one on the left there is bringing it into those master bedrooms. Graham, if you go to the next page for me, please. So you can see here, so, oh, sorry, Graham, could you go back? Actually, I forgot to make one more comment. If you can see on the driveway side elevation, you can see the grade right at the, at the rear corner. So you could see how at the edge of the bedroom, I drew a line there, even at the edge of the bedroom, even not where the dark, the main windows are not even facing, we're still in conformance with that three foot six requirement. And of course, more importantly, towards the rear, you're seeing that two foot nine and a quarter. So that's the difference between the finished floor level of the basement and the grade right along that rear wall. And where you will see on the next page where those good-sized egress windows are for that bedroom in the basement story. So Graham, if you go to that next page for me, please. So you can see here on the left-hand side, we are showing that, again, there's that two foot nine and a quarter dimension again, less than three foot six per the housing code. We are providing generous sized windows, they need the egress, they more than meet the egress requirements and they bring in enough natural light so that you are not getting the basement feeling and the basement qualities of space and natural light in that space. And I think that was one of the main concerns with that housing code. So I want to make sure to make that clear, that we understand that code, we respect that code a lot. And I think in this case, you know, we're showing that we're not creating this kind of dungeonous cavernous bedroom space in the basement. And of course, and then the side yard elevation you're seeing on the right-hand side is the facade that is facing 23 New Street. Again, more modest because of the spaces there don't really, don't require as much natural light, but still giving it the same treatment and quality that the other facades are getting. And then finally, we wanted to also provide sectional qualities, again, similar to what we've been showing in other applications, sectional qualities through the main roof on the cross-section, the cross-sections of the dormers. Now we're doing the shed dormers on both sides in order to create a more open floor plan with generous ceiling heights. And of course, showing how the staircases are in relationship with those dormers and in relationship with the rest of the units. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Adam. You covered all the questions I had, as well as those set forth in Graham's letter memo from July 7th. So I have no further questions.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
Can we look at the driveway elevation again?
Nope, that was it, yep.
My only concern, actually, and, and, and now it's over the site. I've looked at that now and I don't know the height between the bottom of your pop-out bay areas and the top of a car or something. That's a concern I have, but let's go back to the site plan then. My, my concern, and I don't know how to solve it, by the way. My concern is that every one of those four vehicles now have to, either they're going to back into the space, which I find unlikely. And if anybody has an SUV, they're going to hit those pop-out areas in some areas for sure. Or alternatively, they're forced to back out of the driveway onto the street. And these streets are rather narrow in that area. So I, I don't know that there's another solution, but I, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that every one of these vehicles essentially has to back out across the sidewalk onto the street. In an area where there are a lot of people on the streets. So I, I don't know what the solution is. I don't know if you have any thoughts on it, but it is a, it's a concern. And I'm not saying there is a solution or I don't know if there's a solution, but it's certainly a concern.
It is a concern. I do agree with you that, that current driveway setup is the existing condition currently. We did reduce the parking area because we just wanted to provide the minimum amount of parking. But the dimension and depth of that entire side parking area is existing and is currently being used as we're showing it here. And it's been in use that way for a number of years.
My other concern is people often have enough trouble driving up to a wall, ver, you know, when they're going perpendicular to the wall. That's tough enough as it is. When you're hitting these walls at an angle, the way you're doing, without some bumper stops or something, I have enormous fear that the structure will get hit by vehicles pulling into these spaces. So I think you need to take some precautions. And again, that's the issue of going in forward or going in backward or what people will choose to do. But if you're going backward, you have a real problem and I'm certain the building is going to get hit. If you're going forward, maybe yes, maybe no. And I know the all the cars have cameras on the back now, but it's, it's a pretty tight area. So I have some concerns about the parking.
We could put the asphalt back that we're trying to remove and push the parking stalls even further towards the back.
Well, I mean, the issue is unless the, I guess my point is unless there's a way for them to drive in and then turn around to drive out. The problem of backing out on what are tight sidewalks and streets to begin with, with very little space between the buildings and the sidewalk, is, is a tough situation. I, I think there are some dangers there. And in this case, I also think there are potential dangers to the structure. So I have, I have concerns on both sides of that discussion and I'm not sure what the answer is unless you start shoving the parking all the way to the back and find a way of somebody making a K-turn and getting out. So I, I'm putting it on the table because it's a concern.
What, one of the things that we did do that I did not highlight was that you can see that removal of portion of asphalt for the grass at the front of the, of the architectural site plan there. So that green area and that buffer between where the parking starts and where the sidewalk is, we added that buffer zone because we knew the parking is a little bit tight. We know that it's a little bit, it is tight, we agree with you. So we added that buffer area so this way, especially from that parking stall one, you're not immediately backing out right into the sidewalk. You are at least giving the opportunity and time for a car to back out or go forward, straighten out and then be able to assess and look to understand and see if there are any pedestrian traffic.
Well, I, I'm more worried about, I'm more, frankly, I'm more worried about the pedestrians being able to see the car that's backing out.
Well, we're not proposing, we're, we're not proposing any kind of fence line at the front, so that there will be clear visibility from the street.
I'm just looking at the plantings themselves and I don't know the height of, of those plantings or plantings.
We're, we're proposing low shrubs, so nothing beyond maybe three, three and a half feet tall at the highest.
What, what's the height we do on, on the corners in, in, in terms of planting at the corners to give visibility?
Yeah, there is a maximum height, I think it's 30 inches. So then we would, we would, we would want to conform to that 30.
I'd want to make sure that the plantings didn't exceed the 30 inches because the plantings themselves can become another visible blockage of seeing pedestrians on, on the streets. But I wish there was a better solution to the problem.
Yeah, we tried to create that buffer. We did understand that we, we, we can provide some bumpers and some kind of protections to the building. And so that way the cars do not, you know, hit the structure as well. We, we can provide those.
No, okay, I, I think they're both at risk, the structure and the vehicles, but that's it. That's all I have.
Hey, Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Thank you, no.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Hey, Adam. There's, Graham's memo, there's a picture of the parking lot and there's like a guide wire of a utility pole in the parking area there too. It seems like a lot of stuff in that location. The parking looks to me like, I don't know, it's a hard parking area, I feel like.
But Graham, do you have that photo?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up now. There's a guide wire for the utility pole that's located at the front of the property.
Oh, so it's in line with that existing utility pole that I'm showing on the drawing.
Like we, right now we have two cars in there. I'm, I'm sure they probably do have four cars in there at, at some time, but I don't want to lose the, the grass as well. I, I'm not sure the best solution, I guess.
But we, the reason, the reason for what we propose is to help reduce some of the hardscape, provide that buffer. You know, we, we try our best to make the best situation from something that's already quite tight and quite difficult.
Understand. Yep, understand, whatever you can do, you know, to alleviate backing out of that, you know, for the pedestrian aspect of it. Thanks, Adam.
Okay, Mr. Viera, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess the, the only question for Mr. Lasota will be regarding the exposed basement on their grade level. Just to confirm that the applicant will comply with Montclair Code 190-18, Section E. Specifically when the code that says that the walls on the floor that are in contact with the, with the earth will be waterproof, just to confirm.
Absolutely, yes. I also do, absolutely, we do make reference to that exact code, Section 190-18E on the elevations as well. So we absolutely will conform to that standard. Thank you.
I just have one question. The, the chain link fence that shows on the survey and on the photo that's there, and the survey shows it on this property, is that this property?
Yes, that's, the chain link fence is existing. We, we were hoping, we were, we would like to replace it with a similar stockade fence that you're seeing currently at the front.
Okay, so my, my question on that is, it's the same question as we discussed on the shrubs on the other side is how, how, how far forward would that go? I'm, you know, again, concerned with cars backing out and being able to see pedestrians approaching and cars approaching. I'm, you know, again, concerned with cars backing out and being able to see pedestrians approaching and cars approaching.
How far would that replacement fence go? Is that the question?
Yes.
So the replacement fence would go as far where, actually, Graham, if you can go to the, to the architectural site plan. So do you see the dimension of 12.73, and then there's a line in line where that grass area is?
Yes.
We would, we would like to start the fence in line with that to not impede on any view towards the sidewalk.
Okay, so that would be behind the front of the house.
Correct, because again, it's, it's a concern of safety to the board, and I am absolutely in agreement that a fence should not be built all the way to the property line abutting right against a sidewalk because of how tight the parking situation currently is.
Okay. Now, are there any members of the public who have questions for the witness? Let me do if, if, if you either have questions or if you have comments, testimony, statements, anything to say about the application, now is the chance to do it.
Okay, all members of the public, I'll be unmuting your lines. If you have any questions or comments on this application, please state your name. All lines are now unmuted. If you have a question or a comment, please state your name. And last call, all members of the public, if you have a question or a comment on this application, please state your name. Mr. Chairman, I'm not hearing any inquiries.
Okay. Do you have anything for, any further witnesses or anything further you want to say on the application?
No further witnesses, and very briefly, this application, again, is a continuation of what you've seen from this applicant and, you know, will continue to see from this applicant with the high-quality finishes and the attention to detail. These are very minor variances that are being requested, that are pre-existing with respect to the front yard setback, and hope the board sees fit to approve this application. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start discussion with Mr. McCullough.
I'm, I'm supportive of this application.
Okay, Mr. Caulfield?
I am in support of this application.
Okay, Mr. Vera?
Yeah, I'm mostly in support of this application.
Mr. Fleischer?
I'm in support of the application, but I believe that it needs to be conditions related to both the fence and to the plantings and to some type of bumper stop or something to prevent vehicles from hitting, from striking the building in this very tight area.
Mr. Moore?
I'm in favor of the application.
Mr. Church?
I'm also in favor of the application.
Okay, I'm also in favor of the application. I think due to the existing conditions on the site the applicant has demonstrated, meets the requirements for variance. This is clearly an upgrade to the site and to the neighborhood would not be a substantial detriment to the public or a substantial impairment of the zone plan in terms of conditions that the applicant install bumper strips in each of the parking space. At the planning, the proposed planning in the front, and so at no time does it exceed 30 inches. That the existing chain link fence be removed and the replacement non-chain link fence that will replace it be no closer to the front property line than the closest stripe, the park, parking stall number one, the, the striking for that that's closest to the street and line up with the far corner, the corner of that. So there's something specific rather than they're just a line in the plan, but that's approximately what that line is showing. Any other discussion from members of the board? Someone want to make a motion?
Move approval of the application with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Second.
Okay, Graham, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes. And, okay, with that, we'll take a break. Back at 9:55 to finish up the remainder of our agenda.
Mr. McCullough, are you here? Is that just you, Mr. McCullough?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Graham, I'm here as well. It's Jonathan Moore.
Hi, Jonathan. Great. Okay, Rick, whenever you're ready for us, just give us the sign and we'll move forward. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next application is that of Michael Bender for property at 18 Waterbury Road. This is an application for a variance to construct and attach garage to the rear of the existing dwelling. Properties in the R11 family zone, properties designated on the township tax maps as lot 24 and block 3,410. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-46A2 to permit a side yard setback for accessory structures of less than the required six feet. The applicant also requests any other variances that are required or taxes paid and is the notice in order.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Bender, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Michael Bender, 18 Waterbury Road, Montclair, 07043.
Okay, you want to explain what you're doing and why?
Sure. We purchased the property in 2007 and the existing garage standing at the time was an aluminum prefab structure that's probably been there for 50 years or so. We are now planning to replace that structure with a wood frame consistent with the styles of the house. A single car garage, you're asking for a side yard setback, essentially to build on the existing footprint to the side yard while extending out the back within the six feet required by zoning code.
Sorry, Mr. Harrison, we're on mute.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
Simply, the new shed is also being added, is that not right?
The storage unit as part of the single structure on the back of the garage, yes.
Okay, and therefore the driveway is being reconfigured?
No, we're going to keep the driveway exactly as is. If you see on the plot plan, you can see the outline of the existing garage. What we're doing really only is extending to accommodate that new shed space in the back. So we'll have the same, more or less. We may or may not do the carport, but the essentially, we're putting a garage exactly where the existing garage is with a new storage space out the back.
And you're adding the carport. I mean, what, I want to know what I'm approving, but does the driveway currently go out to the area where the carport is?
It does. If you see the outline of the driveway now, we have Belgian block that runs on both sides of the driveway and frames up the driveway in the back.
Thank you. That answered the question. Thank you. I'm sorry for not having seen that. I apologize. That's the only basic question I have.
Okay, Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
Hang on, Mr. Church. Go ahead, Mr. Church.
I have no questions.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm not hearing any inquiries for your comment.
Okay. Mr. Bender, do you have anything further you want to say before we discuss and vote on the application?
I don't. I'm hoping it's a fairly straightforward plan.
Okay, we'll start discussion with Mr. Caulfield.
I'm in favor of this new garage. Thank you.
Mr. Vera?
I'm also in favor of their proposed work.
Mr. Fleischer?
I'm in favor. I would like to see a condition that requires them to make sure that any drainage off this steeply pitched roof enters a gutter and then remains on their property. But other than that, I think my problem gets to be when we don't reuse any part of an existing structure and we allow people to go within three foot when they have a fairly wide lot.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
Simply, the new shed is also being added, is that not right?
The storage unit as part of the single structure on the back of the garage, yes.
Okay, and therefore the driveway is being reconfigured?
No, we're going to keep the driveway exactly as is. If you see on the plot plan, you can see the outline of the existing garage. What we're doing really only is extending to accommodate that new shed space in the back. So we'll have the same, more or less. We may or may not do the carport, but the essentially, we're putting a garage exactly where the existing garage is with a new storage space out the back.
And you're adding the carport. I mean, what, I want to know what I'm approving, but does the driveway currently go out to the area where the carport is?
It does. If you see the outline of the driveway now, we have Belgian block that runs on both sides of the driveway and frames up the driveway in the back.
Thank you. That answered the question. Thank you. I'm sorry for not having seen that. I apologize. That's the only basic question I have.
Okay, Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
Hang on, Mr. Church. Go ahead, Mr. Church.
I have no questions.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm not hearing any inquiries for your comment.
Okay. Mr. Bender, do you have anything further you want to say before we discuss and vote on the application?
I don't. I'm hoping it's a fairly straightforward plan.
Okay, we'll start discussion with Mr. Caulfield.
I'm in favor of this new garage. Thank you.
Mr. Vera?
I'm also in favor of their proposed work.
Mr. Fleischer?
I'm in favor. I would like to see a condition that requires them to make sure that any drainage off this steeply pitched roof enters a gutter and then remains on their property. But other than that, I think my problem gets to be when we don't reuse any part of an existing structure and we allow people to go within three foot when they have a fairly wide lot. My excuse to myself on this one is it's basically aligning with the drive that already exists and they don't have to change it. But I'm not really super comfortable letting every, what is essentially a brand-new structure, letting every new structure come within three feet of a property line. But under the circumstances and a continuation of the line of the driveway, I'm satisfied on this application.
Mr. Moore?
I'm in favor of the application.
Okay, Mr. Church?
I'm in favor of the application.
Mr. McCullough?
I support the applications.
I'm also in favor of the application. I think, given the location of the existing driveway to shift the garage over to a conforming location would, you know, not be a desirable outcome, could have three feet of the driveway leading to nothing. I, you know, so I think they justify, given the existing conditions on the lot, the variance. This will not result in a substantial detriment to the public good or a substantial impairment to the zone plan. They should be required to adhere to the conditions imposed by the Historic Preservation Commission. And as Mr. Fleischer said, that gutters and downspouts be installed and those on south side of the building, the side nearest the neighbor, whether encroachment to the side yard is that it be directed towards the property, but does not go on to the neighbor's property to the south. Any further discussion, members of the board? Someone want to make a motion?
Move approval of the application with the conditions stated by the chair.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, are we going to do all in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, go replace your garage.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
The next application is that of Michael and Jessica Gooden for property at 18 Van Bremen Court. This is an application for a variance to construct in addition to the existing dwelling on the property. Properties in the R11 family zone, the property is designated on the township tax map as lot 144, block 3,902. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45B1 to permit a minimum front yard setback of less than the required 25 feet of the average front yard setback. Buildings, whatever is greater, a variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45B1 to permit a minimum side yard setback of less than the required six feet from one side and 10 feet from the other. A variance is also required from Montclair Code Section 347-45B4 to permit a maximum building width of greater than 65% of the width of the lot. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes. Yeah.
Are the applicants present?
Yes, we have Mr. Gooden. Are you here? Mr. Gooden, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here as well as Mr. Graziano.
Yes, Mr. Graziano, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great. Okay, Mr. Gooden, are you going to testify or are you just throwing it over to Mr. Graziano?
I can take him.
Mr. Graziano, drive his bus.
Mr. Graziano, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
And, Mr. Graziano, you're a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And your license is in good standing?
It is.
Thank you.
Okay, want to proceed, explain what you're proposing to do to the house?
Sure. So I was retained by the Goodens to enlarge their existing single-family home. It's a 1950s split level. So we are seeking three variances, one for front yard. We are, we're not exacerbating any of the existing non-conforming conditions. The proposed partial second-story addition will just be aligning with the front of the existing adjacent second story to the lineup and make everything look continuous. Same thing on the side yard. We are proposing a side yard distance of 5.71 feet or six is required. Again, that's just to stack on top of the existing attached one-car garage and maximum building width, which is also a pre-existing non-conforming condition, where we are just going on top of the existing garage to create to match the existing building width. We're also doing a rear addition that is fully compliant with side yard, rear and building coverage requirements to enlarge the kitchen. The, if you're familiar with the kitchen/dining room area in a 1950s split level, there's not a lot of elbow room. The, you know, the Goodens are, have been grandparents for a few years now and just need a little bit more space for that expanding family. So that is basically the summary of the addition that we're proposing and the variances that were requested.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
At the moment.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
No, Chair.
Mr. Vera, do you have any questions?
No question.
I have a couple of questions. In the planner's memo, he indicated, I mean, your property has two front yards. The one on, traditional one on Van Bremen Court, but the other one on Skytop Terrace. Have you determined whether their, the rear addition conforms to the front yard setback on Skytop Terrace?
I'd be happy to do that. I would need a little bit of help from the township. I'm not able to determine where those front property lines are on those Skytop Terrace properties. I was able to get a location on the front property lines on Van Bremen because I have the Gooden survey. I was able to measure from the curb line to the front of the existing house and then just subtract the distance from the house to the property line and get the location. The distance between the front property lines and the curb line. And that's how I was able to measure the two adjacent structures on either side on Van Bremen. But I don't have any information on those property lines on Skytop. I would need somebody in engineering possibly to just let me know how far away from the curb line those front property lines are.
Okay. Graham, I guess this is kind of a unusual situation. I mean, we don't have a lot of two-yards. Yards, but we do get them occasionally. But it's the orientation of the two houses on Skytop Terrace where they're really perpendicular to they face the cul-de-sac perpendicular to how this lot faces the cul-de-sac. And so in terms of what the ordinance is trying to accomplish with the front yard setbacks, I'm not quite sure how to acquire it. And then you have the other thing with the northernmost house where you have that little access road that goes by its east side.
Right.
Which I last walked on six years ago.
Yeah, I'm showing that on the screen now from my memo. So you're referencing this house. Yeah, this, I mean, this really kind of gets into an interpretation question. You know, the front yard setback by ordinance is calculated as the average of the four adjacent, two on each side. So, you know, that would be, I guess, this distance and this distance. And there is a small portion of this lot that is technically a front corner. Would it be this distance and then this distance? I don't know. You know, it's, it's, it is a unique figure.
Would you use the Van Bremen?
Oh, it's, it's.
Properties on Skytop, though, and not Van Bremen?
Well, I mean, I would argue that the two houses to the north on Van Bremen don't front on Skytop.
Right.
And it's, you know, you have the one house to the south, which marginally fronts on it.
Right.
And then you have the two houses on Skytop and it's, you know, if this house had been built so the driveway accessed it from Skytop and you had that, and you had that orientation, how do we, how do you, how do we normally look at it when houses are on a cul-de-sac like this?
So on a cul-de-sac, you know, this, well, this right-of-way hitch is kind of confusing. But, I mean, typically, we would measure the front yard setback for these two and then this one and this one, I guess, if we weren't counting this, this small portion that touched. Do you do the average of those four from Skytop?
This is in every way, shape, effectively not part of that turnaround on Skytop. I mean, it's just, it's not part of the cul-de-sac, really.
Yeah. Yeah, the strict application of the ordinance is that a property with frontages along two parallel streets that do not intersect, in this case would be the portion of Skytop Terrace cul-de-sac and Van Bremen, is considered a through lot. So the rear, there is no rear yard and both yards are considered to be front yards.
I know, but I'm saying the comparison of dimensions makes almost no sense because it has no impact on the fronts of the two Skytop properties that do front. In other words, the whole concept of the alignment makes sense within the context of how it impacts the adjacent structures. In this case, this really doesn't impact the structures, in a sense, at all because there's no alignment issues between, between the properties.
I mean, I mean, my thought on this is that, you know, we approve it under the assumption of variance is necessary rather than sending them off to try and do these calculations, which, as Mr. Fleischer said, is kind of pointless because you're comparing apples and oranges in terms of setback. You know, technically, they're all set back some distance from Skytop Terrace, but visually, there's no relationship between the houses. So that, I mean, that's my thought is the way to handle it and so they can, you know, if all the board agrees, we can send them on their way tonight without having to go off and do a calculation. Are there any members of the public who have any questions, testimony, statements, anything to say about the application?
I'll unmute the lines, Mr. Chair, but it appears it's just the remaining applicants that are in the meeting at this point. Any members of the public remaining in the meeting, if you have any comments or questions on this application, please state your name and we'll let you make your comment.
I'd rather you do it and not me. I'm so tired. I'm not gonna.
I wasn't hearing any comments or questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Does the applicant or the effect have anything further that you want to say before we discuss and vote on the application?
Yeah, just to quickly sum up, we do believe that relief is proper based on the nature of the existing structure on the property and the manner in which it's being approved. We submit this is a very reasonable project and will improve the property in a fashion consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. And we believe that it merits your favorable consideration this evening. Thanks for your time.
Okay, just, Graham, one question. Is this one of the ones we got the review letter from the engineer?
Yes, there was a comment letter from the engineer.
Which I printed out and swallowed along with the other one, so.
The engineer notes that the proposed addition does count as a minor development and, you know, will be subject to preparation of a stormwater plan.
Okay, so we can approve it subject to the engineer's memo?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm not sure where we're up to. I think we're up to Mr. Vera starting the discussion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Eric.
Are you, are you in support or not? You know, do you have any, how are you voting on the application?
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in general in favor of this application.
Okay, Mr. Fleischer?
I'm in favor of the application estimate with the conditions stated.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
I'm in favor of the application. I'm very familiar with the street and the block. And I think that it will certainly continue with the growth of the home's aesthetics and developing on the street. As you know, a number of houses are starting to build on top of their existing additions. So I'm in favor of the application, given the conditions from the engineer's recommendations.
Mr. Church?
Yeah, I am also in favor of the application as presented with the engineer's recommendation.
Mr. McCullough?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Caulfield?
I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor of the application. I think, you know, basically, they're putting the addition of the garage is keeping with the existing setback and the existing house width. You know, we don't know for sure whether the rear addition is is not encroaching on the required front yard setback to come up terrace. But I think, given the unique circumstances as to this lot's orientation to Skytop Terrace versus the other lots that border of Skytop, the cul-de-sac on Skytop Terrace, that the variance is necessary, that whether we qualify that the it should be subject to conditions in the engineer's memo. And I just, and that a condition that the rear addition be no closer than 36.55 feet to Skytop Terrace. Just what's shown on their plans. Any further discussion? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
Move approval of the application with the conditions stated.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Enjoy your improvement.
Any abstentions? Go on and.
Improve. All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Have a nice night. Thank you.
Okay, well, next application is that of Jennifer Hirsch and Eric Reimer for property at 374 North Fulton Avenue. This is an application for a venture to front porch addition. Properties in the R11 family zone is designated on the township tax maps as lot 18 and block 2,505. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45B1 to permit a minimum front yard setback of less than the required 25 or the average front yard setback of existing buildings. The applicant also requests any other variances that are required or taxes paid in order.
Yes.
And are the applicants?
Yes, we have the Hirsches and Ms. Brinkman is also here.
Let me ask the applicants, is Ms. Brinkman going to do your presentation or are you going to testify also?
Ms. Brinkman.
All right, Karen, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Karen Brinkman, 162 Orange Road, Montclair, New Jersey.
And Ms. Brinkman, you're a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes.
Okay, you can proceed.
Okay, welcome back and tell us what you're proposing to do.
Okay, good to see you all. So the goal is to provide a front porch across this single-family home. As you can see right now, there are some interesting features on the front of the home. I feel that creating a As you can see right now, there are some interesting features on the front of the home. I feel that creating a front porch will provide. Usable space and also kind of unify the facade. Right now there's a lot of different competing elements. And our goal is to prove, we looked at a number of different iterations and how best to create a pleasing facade that was also functional. And what we came up with was doing a front porch going across the, um, from. The north side and aligning with the second floor on the south side. Um, using a shed roof to mimic the existing shed roofs that exist in the dormer and the attic and over the stairwell to the north. And I think that's, um, so one of the, the unique features of this lot is that the house is, the lot is slanted. And so you can see that. By coming out, um, we. Are only three feet from the property line. Um. So that's kind of, you know, the unfortunate situation with the unique circumstances of. This particular. Site. Anything, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
Well, I want to hear, it's, it's also further forward than the other houses to begin with. And none of the adjacent houses, as my recollection goes, have front porches or anything else on them. So this is really pushing it. Quite a bit forward from the other houses. And, and aside from that side lot line, I'm just, I'm just concerned. Of the justification and why wouldn't everybody else on that street with similar homes and similar setbacks? Say now I want my front porch and I want, it just. I, I'm not so sure. That this is just a gimmick on this one. And, and I'm not sure it has to go to provide some nice space. I'm not sure it has to go all the way across. The entire front, which is interestingly enough asymmetrical to begin with. So I, I have some concerns about the front yard and, and the side yard, and, and I'm not sure it has to. Span the entire. Width of the house. So that's three questions I'd like to try to get a response. From the architect on.
Absolutely. So, um, you, you're correct that this would be, the majority of houses on this street do not have, um, front porches. You know, the current overhang over the front door is, I mean, it's cute, but it's ineffectual. So. One of the reasons for doing a front porch is A, it provides, um, protection at the front door. The area and by going all the way across, we can, they can utilize the sunroom as a mudroom. So that goal is to remove those three windows. And put a door in there and provide better, more usable space. For the homes. That, you know, in terms of why we went all the way across is to. Be able to annex that sunroom and provide door from the porch directly into the sunroom.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm not. It should be simple, but I'm not terribly comfortable with it. And I know that street very well. I'm, I'm constantly driving on it. And, and none of the other houses really have that vocabulary and to cut, and, and you're already out. Further, I think than the average to begin with. I, I'm not super comfortable with it. And if it didn't span the entire width of the house, I could get. Um, so I always go to that and hear what other people think, but I'm not quite comfortable with it, knowing, knowing that street as well as I do.
Mr. Moore, do you have any? Questions?
No questions.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
Um, no questions right now.
Uh, Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, is, is there a, is there a porch on the back side of the house as well?
You mean like a rear porch?
Yes.
There is a covered opening at the rear door. Paid drive and then that corner right there, there are steps going up to a landing. Yeah, correct there. Um, I mean, it's, it's not something that you can sit on, but there's steps going up. To a landing that goes into the rear of the home.
And, and what room does that lead into, please?
Um, Jen, can you answer that?
Sure. We have, um, we have a family room that's open to the kitchen there. It's a family room addition. So it walks directly into our family room.
I see, okay. So, so that's, that's in addition to the house. That's not part of the original house.
No, it's not. It's an addition that was done in the eighties.
In the, that was prior to your ownership? That, that was prior to your ownership or that something you got?
We, we bought the house in twenty eighteen.
With that there. Okay, thank you. So now going to the front porch. So. Uh, if you add the front porch, how will the, how will the facade of the front of the first floor change?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So looking at the. Can we go back to the, yeah. So you have like a bay window, you have, you have the door, you have a bay window.
Right. So, so the, the door and the bay window would stay. I mean, the location of the door, obviously we're not gonna have, um. You know, we're not, we're not gonna have the overhang over the door anymore because we're gonna have a porch. So that would come off. And then the porch would just, the porch roof would take the place of the bay roof would just, the bay window would just extend to the underside of the. The porch roof.
So, I mean, it, it. It appears in the drawing that the. Bay window on the first floor. You, you said it's still there.
It's still there. It's honestly, it's just graphically to show that behind, it was, it was, I, I felt that it was. Would have been difficult to show. Um, it would just be too many things to show. So, but you can see on the floor plan that the bay window does stay.
All right. Okay. So then the new porch. Uh, would that. Would you be digging into the ground to establish that porch or would it only be above ground?
Well, it'd be on piers. So where you see the columns, we would have brick piers to match the existing brick. So you would have, you know. Five brick ears. You don't, you don't, it's a porch. It doesn't need a full foundation.
Okay, I, that's, uh, what I want to make sure is that this is not the space that could. Eventually be converted into. Livable space.
Understood.
And, and then the, you, you said you're gonna replicate the existing steps. So that would still be five steps, brick steps, brick in. It looks like you have, um.
No, the, the, the new steps would, would be wood. We're, we, you know, we're looking to do, right now there is a brick stoop on the front of the home with, you know, an iron railing. The goal is to kind of do a, a traditional wood porch. Um, unfortunately, you can see a little bit of the brick, um, at the base. And there's a lot of snow there, but, um, to do brick piers that would. Mimic that.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Uh, thanks, Chair. Um. I, I, I live around the corner from this house, so I, I pass it all the time. Um, there are some porches if you go off more towards, um, the northerly side. So that, you know, it's not like unheard of that I have porches that aren't there. I was just looking to see where they were in resemblance. Um. The porch on the left-hand side, there's a, a house that's very far from the property line. This is a driveway there. So I, I'm, I'm trying to get myself comfortable having a porch three point two, whatever it is from the property line. Um, I do think the house is missing something. I can see the porch fitting into that situation, but. Um, there have been concerns about how close it is to the front yard setbacks and stuff like that. And three point two is pretty close. Um, I, you know, I would like to hear whatever other people say, but. You know, I, I know where I, I, I'd be, I'm by this house. I know this house and I know the area, but, you know, I, I wanted to see how. I just wanna think about it a little bit more. Thank you.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I guess the, the only question that I have is regarding to. The additional, uh, impervious surfaces for stormwater management. So in the, in the plans, I did not see where. Uh, that water is going to be. So if you can please talk a little bit about that.
Right. So I mean, if the bulk variance is approved, um, we would do a gutter along the front shed roof. There is an existing underwater drain system that those gutters would attach to. Um, that was our goal. Um. The, the new porch is three hundred and seven square feet. There's an existing stoop that's fifty square feet. So. The actual additional impervious is two hundred and fifty seven square feet. So we're seven square feet over. The requirement for having, um, stormwater management. But yet the goal is to, as I said, there is an existing, you know, we would have. A traditional gutter and with leaders connecting to the existing underground drainage. If we need to do something beyond that. Um, we will look into that if the bulk variance is approved.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so if, if you had a chance to look at the memo from the board's engineer?
Yes.
And will you be able to comply with his recommendations?
Um, yes.
Okay, um, and then if you re, reviewed the historic reservation commission's recommendations?
Yes, actually, if I, if I could, I would like to address those. Um, so what? Is to incorporate engaged columns where, um, where the facade wall meets the dwelling. Um, that's perfectly fine. I, I think that's a good detail. We have no problem with that. I'm a little concerned with, um, the recommendation, item number two, to space the column so that. It's, they're centered around the entry door. If this was a center hall colonial or a house with a very strong center. Centered facade, I, I could see that recommendation. However, um. The center line of the door to the edge of the wall is four feet, eleven inches. And we are proposing, there's no way to get. Proper, what I think is appropriate spacing, having the doors centered, um. Between the columns. And I honestly, I, I find that it's very typical that a lot of times you will have doors that aren't centered, my own home, for example. Um, so I, I mean, I think that it's, you know. In, in this situation, I don't know that that's a hundred percent relevant, um, or that it'll create a huge. Bonus. Um, so that's kind of my comment on that.
Okay, I guess. Probably more significant is that they found, uh, that. The porch is incompatible with the styles of the principal subtypes. And do you want to respond to that?
Um, was, that was the report by Conley and Hickey, correct? Not from the mess?
No, it, no, it says the commission reviewed the application.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Up above. Sorry. Um. You know, I, I, I think that this is, this house is somewhat unique. Um, I don't think it particularly, um. Has a particular style. Um, as I said in the beginning, I think that there are a lot of competing elements with this house. You have a bay window. You have. The arch overhang over the door. You have projecting bays up above, corbels, a whole bunch of things. And I think that actually this porch kind of unifies everything and simplifies it.
Now, um, I did not, um. Understand your response, Mr. Fleischer, in terms of modifying it to keep the side yard setback in terms of its relationship to the building behind it. Can. Can you go over that again with the, the plans and as I. The location of the door to the main house didn't seem to be any reason you couldn't shrink the addition, is it?
You mean in terms of not having it go all the way to the south?
Correct.
Oh, right. So on, at the south, there is an existing sunroom. Um, you can see that there are three windows on the bottom. And then the second floor is set back above. The idea was to modify those three windows and either take out one or to modify that and create. A new door going from the porch and creating that, making that sunroom into a mudroom. Um, so by going all the way across, we can ax that room, which is not really being used. That can become a functional space. So it's common, it's a combination of aesthetics, but also functionality. Um, and because the first floor, the second floor is set back from the first floor. When looking at different roof lines, we had to figure out, you know, how far over this could go. One of the reasons that we didn't go all the way to the end of the first floor is it would have become even closer to the property line. Um, at least three feet is the size of an entry door. So somebody can get back there for maintenance. You could push a lawnmower through there. Um, so the reason for where, why we chose to stop it at that south edge is to align with the second floor above. Um, but then one of the reasons for bringing it all the way over is to access the mudroom.
But if you kept forgetting the, the relationship to the second story. But if you kept the six-foot setback, you could still have your mudroom door where you're proposing it. You said you're, you know, already proposing to modify that facade to accommodate, making that into a. Mudroom with the door there. I'm not understanding why. You couldn't move it over a couple of feet. So you're keeping the six-foot setback. And you still get the access to the mud.
Um, yeah, you, you could do that. And when we were looking at the different options, this just seemed. The most pleasant aesthetically. Um, but you know, that, that would really be up to my clients, whether they would be amenable to, you know, moving that over.
And did you do anything in terms of evaluating? What other, you know, the number of houses that have. Front porches like this, um, between, you know, between Gordonhurst and Wildwood. Um, and, you know, and then what kind of setbacks were they keeping? Were they, were their front porches. Closer to the street than the other houses or are they? Or are they, were their front porches aligned with the other houses?
Most of the front porches are set back further.
Just go, okay, are there any members of the public who have?
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Harrison.
Good, okay, go ahead.
Can we work with the elevations? I mean, one of the, one of the things that bothered me was you see the mass of the, of the big roof, and then you see this following, this sort of jiggered over second floor. I think, and maybe it fits in and maybe it doesn't, because I can't see it and plan an elevation at the same time, but if you picked up the line of the big mass of the roof and ended the porch somewhere along that edge, I think it would be a far better solution than the one you have there now. I really am uncomfortable with the one, not only because of the comments of the preservation commission, which I often don't agree with, but in this case, there's just something wrong with the way this porch is just glommed onto the entire full width of the house. And the issue that it's a mudroom is a little odd, because it's on the same side of the house as the front door. It's just a combination of things that, at least to me, doesn't fit together. And I'm not comfortable with it.
Noted.
That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So, you know, when I'm looking, when I'm looking at this house, and I understand that a lot of what you're trying to do is to make it more aesthetically pleasing. I really sort of get that, but when I look at this house, what I see is an effort to bring a lot of natural light into this house. And so when you then put this porch across the entire facade, you really change the nature of that. And if, and the foyer doesn't have a window. I mean, the only light that comes in is through the, through the door, right? Is that correct?
Yes. Well, I mean, there's also light that comes in from the stairwell from the north, which goes down, which opens down into the foyer.
But, I mean, otherwise, I mean, once you, once you put this porch on, once you put that roof on, that whole sweep of rooms will be dark.
But what does that have to do with the bulk variance?
Well, I guess it doesn't. It's just an observation in terms of, you know, since, since the introduction to this proposal has just been about what is aesthetically pleasing. It just seems as though what's, what's being proposed changes the house dramatically. It's an observation.
Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the public who either have questions concerning the application or any common statements or anything they want to say about the application?
I'll open it up, Mr. Chairman, but the only other attendee here is the last applicant.
They might want to come.
Hi there. Good evening. Any members of the public who have comments on this application? Now is the time to make those comments. I'm not hearing any comments, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Frankton, say anything you want to add before we discuss and vote on the application?
No, I think I've pretty much said everything, so thank you.
Okay, we'll start discussion with Mr. Fleischer.
When all is said and done, I guess I'm not in favor of this application. I'm not in favor of the distance it is out to the front, and I'm certainly not in favor with the fact that the porch, in order to achieve that, is also further violating the side yard setback beyond even what the existing house is. And I live on a house with slanted property line, side lot line. So I know the complications that creates. But I just think that plus the comments from the preservation commission, I'm not in favor of the porch as it's currently presented and would not be in favor of granting the bulk variances for the front yard or the side yard setbacks.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, are you?
He's still here. We come back to Mr. Moore, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Church.
Yeah, I. Hello?
Yes, speaking here.
I would echo Mr. Fleischer's remarks. And not be in favor of the application as presented. I believe it throws the house out of character with the rest of the neighborhood directly adjacent to it. So I would not be in favor of this particular application. And that would be my vote not to approve it.
Mr. McCullough.
Similarly, I don't think that I can support it at this time. Perhaps a different rendering might change my, my point of view. But at this point, I don't think I can support what's being presented.
Mr. Caulfield.
After doing a little bit of look on that, on that block, 383 North Fullerton has a porch, but it, there's a kind of a setback that sets out, and they just lined the porch up there. So this would be kind of a new thing on this block. I'm on the fence. I understand the need, I understand why you think a porch would be good there, but I'm gonna, I'm on the fence. Thank you.
Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have the same concerns that Mr. Fleischer pointed out. And I won't be supporting this application as it's currently proposed. But maybe if the applicant will revise the application to, you know, shorten that distance away from the property line, probably I will support it.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore is no longer connected.
Okay. Also not in favor of the application, I think. There really has been, in terms of the existing conditions on the lot, I don't think there's been any justification for a fairly significant front yard variance or for the side yard variance, I think. And there's not been a justification under a C2 variance that's to the benefits of this outweighing the detriment. I think it is, I don't think it would have a substantial detriment to the public good. I think would be a substantial impairment to the zone plan without any justification being granted as to, in support of granting the variance and would, you know, it is a, you know, a fairly significant deviation and goes beyond what we've traditionally approved. So I would not be in favor of the application as presented to us. Any further discussion among board members? If not, someone to make a motion?
Move to deny the application as presented.
Second.
Okay, Graham, you want to call the roll?
Call the roll. Mr. Viera?
No.
No?
Let's be clear. Yes, yes means to deny, no means not to deny. Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Application is denied. Thank you.
The next application is that of Brian Factor for property at 54 Linden Avenue. This is an application for a variance to construct a front porch addition to the existing dwelling properties in the R11 family zone. And it's designated on attached tax maps of Lot 25 and Block 4009. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45P1 to permit a minimum front yard setback of less than the required 25 feet or the average front yard setback of the existing buildings, whichever is greater. Variance is so requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45C1 to permit a minimum side yard setback of less than the required six feet from one side and 10 feet from the other. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45C4 to permit a maximum building width of greater than 65% of the width of the lot. Access paid and is the notice in order?
Yes. Mr. Factor, can you hear?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Mr. Factor, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
Take your name and address, please.
Brian Factor, 54 Linden Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey, 07042.
Okay, Mr. Fact, you want to proceed and explain what you want, your proposed addition to the house?
Yes, so we want to, we have a side porch that we do not use on a regular basis. And we want to use that space to make our living room bigger. And on top of that, add a sort of office hobby room, which I think is about three quarters of the size of the addition. And that window that we're not going over is a bedroom window. So we want to keep that. And, yeah, in that extra living room space, we also want to add a powder room. And yeah, we just, you know, we need more space. We've got two growing girls and we love the south end. We don't want to leave it. We love our neighborhood. And I'm hoping we can get this project done.
Mr. Harrison, you were on mute.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I need to look a little further at this, at this moment.
Okay. Mr. Church, do you have any question?
Not right now.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. The question I had was about that window. Why the second level extension didn't mirror the first floor? But I believe the homeowner mentioned that there is a bedroom and they want to maintain the window. So I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Caulfield?
No questions.
Mr. Viera, do you have any questions?
No questions at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fleischer?
I guess I don't, he's basically staying within the basic footprint of where that porch was. It's been there. I guess I don't have, I had some concerns when I was first glancing at it, but I don't think there's a real detriment that it's doing. And, and the house, the house is quite small. And so providing a little breathing room, I think is probably okay. So I don't have any questions of the applicant at the moment, really.
Okay, and I assume Mr. Moore is still not?
Mr. Moore is back.
I, are you asking if I have a question? I'm sorry.
I'm asking if you have a question.
I do not.
And I believe I do not have any questions for just one second. No, I don't have any questions. And just for the formality of it, are there any members of the public who have questions, statements, testimony, anything they want to say about the application?
Mr. Chairman, there are no public members present at this time.
You know, but I do it even when we're in the room and there's no one there. It's just, just on the odd chance, you know, someone's making a wish connection. Okay, is, Mr. Factors, anything you want to add before we discuss and vote on the application?
No, there isn't.
Okay, we'll start discussion with Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore, are you there?
Okay, well, Mr. Church?
I have no objections to this application. I think that the, he's staying pretty much within the footprint of the building. And the additional room for a small house like that, whatever you can eke out is welcome. So I would be in favor of the application.
Mr. McCullough?
I support the application.
Mr. Caulfield?
I'd like the applicant to continue to stay at the south end. It's a narrow lot, I understand. I don't think it's a detriment in that sense, so I support this.
Mr. Viera?
I will also support this application.
Mr. Fleischer?
I feel the application is reasonable and, and the footprint is being maintained. And if anything, the fact that you pulled the second floor back a bit, you know, reduces the mass in terms of the overall width. So I'm comfortable with approving this application.
Mr. Moore?
I'm in favor of the application.
I'm also in favor of the application. I mean, the applicant is not worsening any of the existing deviations, either the setback or width of the building. You know, it's a narrow lot with a small house on it, and I think he's trying to improve the situation. So will not result in a substantial detriment to the public or substantial impairment of the zone plan in the circumstances of the lot justify the variance. So I would be in favor and don't see the need for any conditions.
Move and approve of the application I submitted?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Go build your addition. Someone want to make a motion to adjourn? And I'll see everybody in two weeks.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? See you soon.
Good night. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.